Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Turpin Springs on Tuesday, October 13, 2020, at 6:30 PM. Ms. Manusus, wrong call, please.
Mayor LaHoozis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Here.
Mr. Terrapini is after an experience. Commissioner Donovan.
Here.
Commissioner Vaticiotis.
Here.
Tonight's vacation will be given by the city attorney, following with a pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, as the citizens of the City of Turpin Springs meet together to do to address our local concerns and opportunities, we give thanks to you for the bounty that we enjoy in all aspects of our community life and for the peace and beauty that we enjoy each day. We ask for your inspiration to strive for excellence in our endeavors to serve the public. Grant us peace in our world and harmony between all peoples to your greater glory. Thus we pray, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now going to the public comments on the items that were not going to be discussed this evening. Mrs. Manusus, have we received any emails?
No emails were received, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Jep, do we have anyone online that are wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak on items not on the agenda, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a presentation, Anclot River Dredge Project Update. Mr. Licoris.
Mark, you're muted, but I assume you just handed it off to me.
Okay.
I did.
Go ahead, Mr. Robinson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. So for this item, I'm going to give you an update on the Anclot River dredge project status. So generally speaking, as you know, the dredging of the Anclot River consists of two parts, the project does anyway. The federal dredge, which is the United States Army Corps of Engineers responsibility, and the extended turning basin, which is the city's responsibility. These two parts are intended to be completely, excuse me, completed simultaneously, taking advantage of contractor mobilization, temporary pipeline construction, and temporary spoils treatment facilities. Design work is completed for both of these projects, and we're waiting, completing the completion of the federal procurement process, which has been delayed, and I'll elaborate on that here in a second. In order to, yeah, we're waiting on these things to move the projects forward. So for the federal dredge, the Army Corps received bids from contractors in September. And as weirdly as this seems to be phenomenon, the low bidder was deemed to be unqualified by the Army Corps of Engineers. The second lowest bid exceeded the government's cost estimate by 25%, more than 25%. And because of that, the government was not permitted to automatically award the contract to the second lowest bidder. So instead, they began a negotiating process. And in some more recent news, the mayor and I and the city manager reached out to the Army Corps, and it appears that the Army Corps has identified additional funds that could be used to to enter into the contract and award the contract to the second lowest bidder. It's our understanding that that funding is held up in Washington DC, and the mayor reached out to Congressman Villaracas to try to work on that. Mayor, I don't know if you wanted to comment anymore on that, but I can keep on moving through that if you want.
The only thing I would like to say is that I spoke to Congressman Gaspilirakis this afternoon, and he's still communicating with the with the Army Corps of Engineers, also with the Secretary of Transportation in Washington, trying to transfer the the funds from the from the project that was left over, from the Puerto Rico project to Anclot River. So I'm hoping that will be successful, so we don't have to go through the bidding process.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll just continue here with my with my update. Some some updates on, there were some general descriptions and kind of clarifications on the scope of work for the federal dredge. Reminders that the scope of work for the federal dredge includes maintenance dredging of the shoal locations in the Anclot River from the turning basin to the mouth of the river. The dredging of the outer cuts near Anclot Key will be completed by the Army Corps' in-house dredging team, as has been the plan since about 2018. The Corps states that they have, quote, "submitted this additional dredging within the fiscal 21, fiscal year 21 work request," but at this time, they do not have a timeframe for this, or if funding will materialize, and then they go on to tell me that it could be February or March timeframe for that funding to materialize. So needless to say, we will stay very close to this and continue to to stay on top of that, keep the board informed. In response to a question from Commissioner Vaticiotis regarding the in-water pipeline, according to the Corps, the scope of the contractor's work includes specifications to outline requirements for the pipeline and how it should not be placed to limit access to riverboat traffic, and if the pipe is floating, it will be marked and visible. Permitting for the overland pipeline construction is completed, permitting for the spoil site is completed. These two items, according to the Army Corps, would likely be one of the early items in their construction schedule, since both must be in place prior to the dredging initiating. The spoil site construction is covered by the Army Corps' contract and is the responsibility of the Army Corps contractor. Construction and removal of the temporary pipelines is the responsibility of the Army Corps contractor. And restoration of the spoil site after the dredge work is completed will be the city's responsibility and is indeed actually required as part of our lease agreement. Funding for this work is covered by the state funding grant, and we are projected to have sufficient funds in the grant to complete this work based on recent estimates to move that material off. So I'll move on to the extended turning basin here. We're pretty much in a holding pattern as we wait for the procurement process on the federal side. DEP, as you all know, has accepted the city's proposal to dredge the 1.93 acres of the extended turning basin. The Department of the Army permit has been received, and now we're just waiting to receive our Pinellas County dredge and fill permit, which we expect to receive pretty soon. And as you all know, we intend to negotiate a separate contract with the Army Corps' awarded contractor to complete this additional dredge work, again, taking advantage of the fact that we have some significant cost savings doing it this way. The Army Corps has no objections, of course, to this approach. So again, we're waiting on the procurement process on the federal side before we can start any of that work. I'll touch on the project schedule. Of course, I can't really comment too much on it as we're waiting on the the procurement to be completed, but if that does go through on a reasonable timeframe, I would expect this work to begin sometime early next year, maybe into the spring. Of course, schedule depends entirely on that procurement schedule, like I said, and a more precise schedule will be shared with the board and with the public as it becomes better defined. And the last thing I'll point out or note in this update is that the Army Corps senior project manager and engineer will both be here to attend a city commission meeting on the 17th of November, and they will be here to meet with the board, make a brief presentation, and answer your questions and the public's questions. So with that, I will stop for questions and comments.
Bob, I want to thank you for the presentation and the and your hard work and you stay focused on this project. Also, we'd like to say that we stay in touch with the administrator of the Army Corps of Engineers. So any questions that we have, we're going directly to the top. And I'm hoping that we'll be successful to transfer the funds to our project so we can so we can be on schedule. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
We go to Commission, Commissioned Comments, Vice Mayor Carr.
Mayor, I don't have any comments right now. I appreciate the hard work by the staff there.
Thank you. Commissioner Donovan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to thank staff's effort on this and your effort, Mayor, getting in touch with Congressman Villaracas. Really appreciate that. I know this is something that the whole board's been working on for seemingly forever. Bob, I just, I had a quick question on the scope of work. If you go back to the first page when it's discussing the outer cuts by Anclot Key, one of the notes there at the end, it says, you know, "We do not have a timeframe for this or if funding will materialize." I just had a question in terms of that funding. So is that saying the funding might not materialize for like February? Or the funding could not materialize at all, and that that part of the project could be in jeopardy?
I think what they're trying to tell me is that we won't know until February or March if that funding or when that funding materialized. Sorry, there was some feedback there. But it has been the Corps' intention all along to do this, to do this approach this way. And whether they are able to squeeze in the funding for that fiscal year or maybe into the next fall, we don't know for sure. But that has always been their intention, to do it this way. And we will stay on top of it, for sure.
Okay, thank you. And when they come here on November 17th, are they coming for like just our our regular commission meeting? Or do you know if like they're going to be here the whole day? Will they be meeting or will they be going like out on the river or anything like that?
They're coming to, they're coming to meet with you specifically, and they're going to stay through the night and meet with staff on the following morning. Hopefully, we'll have a lot to discuss. Hopefully, that project will be procured and moving forward, but that is the intention right now.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Those are my questions.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaticiotis.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good news on the funding. I'm very happy to hear about that. Maybe we can get things moving a little quicker. Can you all hear me okay?
Sure.
Okay. The I do have a couple of questions. On the timing on this, I tend to agree with Mr. Robertson, but generally, more realistically, probably the June timeframe is when the dredging would actually start. There's some environmental issues that we're going to get bogged down in with regard to gopher tortoises in the wintertime. There's some monitoring requirements that may prevent us from actually constructing the disposal disposal site, disposal pond in a timely manner. So we'll have to kind of play that one by ear. I do have a question on the oh, and by the way, it is a 360-day period for completion. So if we got started in the spring or even June, we're not looking at completing the project until spring or June of 2022. So just if we could all be mindful of that. I do have a question. I sent a memorandum concerning the truck route for the moving the disposal to the landfill. Is the staff going to work to try and change that route? Or is that, I mean, is that something that the commission has to get involved and decide whether it's acceptable or not? Or I'm not sure how we're going to do that at this point, or whether we would need to worry about it at this point. I just think it's something that's weighing on me, and I would hope it weighs on some of the commissioners as well.
Well, I would say there's probably two routes, and they're both bad. Our choice in the permitting was to take the truck route and avoid the residential areas, including the Union Academy neighborhood, which would be, which is already, as you know, taking the brunt of mirrors and the other things. So probably two routes, the route to 19 and then back through the Union Academy neighborhood is is bad, and of course, going down, you know, alter 19 through town is not good either, but that is the designated truck route. So that was the decision we made. Obviously, if three of you decide to want to change it and us submit for a change in that, certainly that's when your ability to ask us and us to to submit. And we've got time to do that.
We have time to do that? Is that what you said, C Manager? Okay. The I I just have a question as well. As far as the funding, Mr. Robertson, where, how do you calculate that we're going to have enough funds for the restoring the disposal site? I mean, my my number suggests something else, and I can go over those quickly, but what do you have?
We're, we did a couple of estimates that we've recently updated with from a couple of sources, coming in somewhere around $250,000 to $350,000 to haul that material off. I'm projecting that we'll have somewhere around $350,000 left in the grant funding from the state. So that's why, that's why I say that I feel like we'll have sufficient funds from the grant to be able to move that material.
How many cubic yards are you projecting to move?
54,000.
All right, well, no, no, I agree with that number, and I kind of made the I had a little bit of an oversight as well. It's actually, and I guess maybe my understanding might be the same as yours, that when they talk about restoring the site, it's back to at grade the way we see it right now. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
What would, because actually, there's 40,000 cubic yards. It's going to go into constructing the berms. That's right in the solicitation. I went through that, so that would take it up to about actually, my number was about 80,000, 80,500 cubic yards that we would have to haul. And the number of truckloads, based on my estimate, would be about 6,700 truckloads of dirt. And I also kind of shopped around and looked at about $4 a cubic yard, but then I was reminded that that is okay for just a standard truck. What's going to be needed is environmental truck, because they have to be sealed, also washed down. There's some invasive species requirement that the trucks have to be washed off before they leave the site. So there's going to have to be a washdown station for it. And so I suspect that cost is going to go up. And then when you take into account the rent, I went all the way out till June of 2022, at the outside date, it came out to about $630,000. And I guess we're showing about 450 right now. I know that's state money, but we and I'm not saying that there's any issue right now. It's just be mindful of that when we go down the road. C Manager, of course, I'm sure you'll go and also think ahead on this, just as you did with the setting the money aside as far as coming up with the external extended turning basin dredge money that we had and then we lost. So I think we just need to be mindful of that. The only thing, and then as far as the truck route goes, I I know we've got a little time, but I would like for us to think out of the box a little bit, maybe some alternative sites that don't even take it through town at all. Maybe somewhere else that that I, and I don't know, I guess is what I'm getting at. I guess once we get up into this type of money and stuff, and I know part of the money is state, and though we briefly talked about this before, I was in the commissioner about possibility purchasing the property from the Stammas family. I don't even know if they'd be interested in selling it. I didn't do know when I spoke to George Stammas some time ago, he said everything is for sale. So I'm not sure if you'd feel that way, but it's certainly with the amount of money that we're going to be paying for hauling it, and of course, part of that state funds, it might be smart just to kind of look into maybe buying it, leaving the the material there and reusing that spoil site in the future whenever we need it. I think the one thing was we didn't really realize what the cost of this project would be, but as you can see, it's a fairly expensive thing as far as constructing the disposal site, the amount of time to get the permits, and the amount of time we have to keep this property leased. I think if we all, if we go all the way back, quite frankly, we're probably going to be about a million dollars of what we spent on this disposal site, including the rent by the time we're all done. And I think we could have probably bought the property for that by then. So that might be something that we could talk about. Commissioners, I don't know how you feel about that, Mayor. Maybe we could do that in the future? Or if you're not interested, just proceed as we are.
Are you waiting for an answer on that there?
Well, I mean, it'd be nice, but if not, that's okay.
Yeah. I'm not ready to answer that right now.
Okay. All righty, well, anyway, those are my thoughts. I don't have anything else. I just think it's good news that we've got the money. I think it's going to take a little longer to get things started, and and I think it's going to cost us a little more than what we think right now. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Licoris, I would like to ask you a question in regards to the the truck routes. The the routes that you have identified, is it possible that we can have two routes instead of just one? So we can split the other trips?
Yeah, I believe so. In in the permitting, you can do that. Again, the other route would be to get to US 19, and then, of course, you'd have to come down probably MLK, and then then, you know, go through the Union Academy neighborhood to the to the spot. So that would probably be the, that would be the other route that you would look at. I don't know, Bob, do you know anything in the permitting to have two of them for their approval? That they'd approve two to kind of separate the traffic or not? I'm not sure.
Well, there's nothing specifically in the permit that would allow that, but I don't think it would be a problem if we were to do alternate routes, or, for example, set it a return route for the trucks that differs from the delivery route, for example. You know, that might be, the permit does say which which route that the the material will be transported, but it doesn't say which route specifically the trucks would have to go back on. So maybe just to cut the trap, the truck traffic routing in half, we could, as the commissioner said, think outside the box and send those trucks maybe down to Klosterman up 19 or something to avoid at least half the trips.
I would like to see that we split the, you know, the the routes. That way, we won't have too many trips in the one, you know, alternate 19.
We'll, we'll look at that and bring that back to you.
Yes.
Mayor's frozen.
Vice Mayor taking over.
There you go.
Mayor, you back? You were frozen for a minute there, Mayor. We could can you hear us?
Sure, I can hear you.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, did you hear what I said? I don't know if that was transmitted or not.
No.
Yeah. You were blocked out, but I thought I heard you wanted Commissioner Vaticiotis to drive one of the dump trucks to transport some of the dirt, is that right?
Yeah, I'll do it. I mean, if I'm not going to take a hard stand on this. I just think that people don't realize the amount of impact that this is going to have. And I've said my say. I'm not going to argue with the commission over this thing, or the staff for that matter anymore. It's going to be up to the residents and also to yourselves when this thing gets cooking. So thank you.
I think it's good to have a secondary route.
Yeah, I agree completely, Mayor. A secondary route is important. Mark, what about the dump trucks coming down US 19 instead of going down Martin Luther King? They go down the Mango Mirrors extension? So they stay out of the Union Academy?
Well, the problem with that is we don't know what stage of the construction that's going to be. And that's probably going to be, and again, it depends on the timing. Maybe if the timing gets put back enough, there'll be some difference. But we got to account for the other item you have on the agenda tonight and and the construction along there of phase one.
Right, so I'm for looking at another alternative as well, too. It makes sense. I think Commissioner Vaticio has brought up a good point with this, and so thanks for bringing that up.
We are now going to the public comments. Ms. Manusus, have we received any emails on this item?
No emails were received, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Jep, do we have any attendees wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Bob, and we go to consent agenda. Item number two is the minutes. A is the minutes, 5/26/2020 regularization. B is the minutes, 6/9/2020 regularization. C is minutes, 6/23/2020 regularization. And D is the minutes, 7/24/2020 regularization. Number four is the attorney fees, trask and dinol invoice October 2, 2020. Number four is the award file number 210022, and JJ Waters were revenue sufficiently steady. And number five is the award file number 210016, and JL maintenance support equipment and for Motorola radios. Number six is the award file number 210025, CJJ facilities maintenance repair and operations and industrial supplies. Number seven is the award file number 210028, and AM single source purchase, scale refurbishment and relocation. Number eight is reject sole bet submitted for bed number 210020BJL, furnished and install commercial commercial steel building. And number nine is the renew file number 120122, and JJ maintenance for public maintenance for public restrooms at the SpongeDocks. Any of those items that you'd like to pull? Okay, we go to commission comments, anybody has any comments?
None.
Yeah, none? Public comments, Ms. Jacobs, have we received any emails on these items? Items two through nine?
No emails, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jump, have we received, do we have anyone online wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. The chair will obtain a motion.
It's a move.
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Vatico?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Merrill Housas.
Yes. Next is the special consent agenda, item number ten is the award bed number two zero zero one six seven BJL Mango Street Stormwater and roadway improvements. Mr. La Couris staff report.
That's Mr. Robertson, will you give in that one?
Thank you, Mark, again, Bob Robertson, project administration department director. For this item, we're requesting the board's approval to award a construction contract to Kaminga and Roadfoods Incorporated for the Mango Street Stormwater and Roadway Improvements Project. The value of the contract is eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and four cents. The scope of the project is reconstruction of Mango Street from distant to just near Azalea Street. The roadway will be widened and raised to address flooding. The project includes new stormwater infrastructure, construction of a new stormwater pond, and increasing the size of existing stormwater ponds. Sidewalk and bike lanes are also included in the new roadway profile. Project is funded by the Penny Fund and by the Transportation Impact Fund and came in under budget. And the construction schedule allows for one hundred and eighty calendar days to final completion. And that is mayor's staff report, and I'll stop there for comment.
Thank you, Bob. We are working with the Stone Hatch people about the issue that they had, right?
We are, and this section of road doesn't quite reach their entrance yet, that's going to have to come in phase two.
Okay, so the section between Azalea Drive and US nineteen, is that going to be section, phase two?
Yes, that is.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Carr?
Yeah, thanks, mayor. Bob, thanks for the presentation on this and all the backup. I did speak with staff and the city manager about this a little bit further. One of the items that we had discussed in the past was with the housing authority, and did have a discussion with Bob Robertson about this as well, about trying to connect Mango Circle or Mango Loop and North Street, I think it's Mango. Yeah, Mango Loop and North Street, so they're aligned when they come out on to the Mears Mango Extension. Robin was one that was interested in having, she was with the housing authority, and then when the city rezoned the housing authority's land, she seemed to be open to discussing, giving the ability to the city to move that road over so they're aligned better. I think it would be a safety improvement for the area. So I would just like to ask that staff formally at least connects with Robin one more time during the beginning stages, just to see if there's an opportunity to do that, so, thank you.
Commission Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. My only question on this one, Bob, is just regarding the phases, how many phases are there? And what's the phase timeline for this?
Sure, so this was actually going to be one big project from distant all the way to nineteen, and the funding limited us so that we had to prioritize and break the project in two pieces. Phase one is this one, and phase two will be the second and final phase that would widen and improve the stormwater on the east side of Mango Street. The timeline on the second phase is not determined yet. I think we kind of stretched the stormwater funds out to the end for other projects. And so this project is moving forward without stormwater funding. We'd like to try to build back up the stormwater fund, capital reserve to be able to do projects like this. So I think it's probably a couple of years out before we start design on, before we move forward on phase two. Phase two design is done, I should say, I didn't mean to, that was a mistake, I misspoke. The design is ready, so it's just a matter of getting a funds available for construction.
Okay, that's my only question, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vatico?
Thank you, mayor. Just Vice Mayor Carr, I think that was pretty nice of you to take that initiative to proceed with that. I have a question, how come the staff didn't think about this before? Or did they, and you just didn't move on it?
No, we did, we did, and we approached her on it, and the housing authority was not interested at the time we talked to them about doing it when we were doing it. But this is a request from Vice Mayor Carr to go back again for a second time and see if they've changed their mind on that issue.
Yeah, well, I think it's called persistence, and I appreciate Vice Mayor Carr's persistence on this matter. And how long is this project going to take, Mr. Robertson?
We've given the contractor a hundred and eighty day construction schedule.
And are we going to complete this before we start phase two? So there's going to be an overlap?
There will be no overlap, no, this will be completed before we do phase two.
Three years after completion of this project?
Probably a few years, yes, they don't have an exact date for it yet on that.
Is, and there's no way of, I mean, is it a money issue, or is it just, it's not needed? I'm not sure why it's taking so long.
Well, it is primarily a funding issue. We were able to widen phase two, you know, using in-house staff so that it would match the same width, at least the driveline width. So we have what you might call a temporary fix so that it matches up nicely. But it's, like I said, it's primarily funding issue.
And there's no flooding problems in that phase two portion?
Nothing significant compared to what phase one is, no, sir.
Okay. I guess, you know, there's going to be a lot of things, I'm going to wait till budget time again, but that's, I think, one that we should probably talk about. I just don't like leaving these projects stretching out that long from Mears Boulevard at alternate nineteen all the way through to US nineteen, so we can discuss that later. Thank you, and thanks again, Vice Mayor Carr.
Thank you. I'd just like to remind everyone that this phase one project is part of the Stormwater Action Plan. And if you all remember, we purchased land in order to build the retention pond. Bob, do you have, I don't know if you remember the history behind that? This is the action plan that you developed for us a few years ago.
Yes, yes, that's right, and that's correct, we did purchase that property for this project, for this phase.
Okay, we are now going to the public comments. Ms. Manusus, any emails?
No emails, mayor.
Mr. Jump, do we have any attendees wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone would wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you, we need a motion?
I just have a quick comment, mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
About the phase two of Mears, that's one of the items we're asking the state for that we approved as a board for state appropriations for this coming year. And also, Mark, I would like to see if the county would be willing to help us out with part of this, too. It's a connector route, and that's why I think the state will be interested in it. So if we go to the county and the state and ask them for some help on this, that will see if they throw us a little bit from their funding side. It's a long shot, I think, but at the same time, being able to connect Alter nineteen to US nineteen, and ultimately Florida Avenue to US nineteen is a big win, I think, for the county, too. So maybe we could look at that as well for some additional funding to help that project move forward.
Yes, we can, Vice Mayor.
I'm happy to approve. Approve this application, motion to approve.
Second.
In roll call, please.
Mr. Vatico?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Merrill Housas.
Yes. Next is item number eleven, award bid number twenty-one zero 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 one BJJ Tarper Springs Gateway Monument Sign. This is the rebid. Staff report, Mr. La Couris.
That's Bob, I guess this one's yours, too. We're bringing it back.
Yes, sir. Okay, so I'm Bob Robertson, project administration department director. And for this item, we're requesting that the board award a construction contract to Quality Neon Sign Company, doing business as Harbinger Sign, for the Gateway Monument Signs project in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars. The project consists of construction and installation of six new monument signs to be situated at gateway locations within the city. There are two board-approved sign styles that will be installed in locations shown in the backup memo on Alt nineteen, Tarpon Avenue, and US nineteen. The project is funded by the Penny Fund and came in under the project budget. The construction schedule allows for two hundred days to final completion. And with that, I will stop for questions and comments.
Thank you, Bob. If I remember correctly, the landscape, it was going to be done in-house?
That's correct.
So the only thing they're going to do is just install the signs, right? The base and the sign?
Yep, that's right, this contract is for signs only.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Carr, any comments?
I'm just happy to see a reduction from the initial bid. There's a significant reduction when they went out to rebid, so thanks, thank you staff for going for rebid on that one.
Commission Donovan, any comments?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I appreciate staff's effort on this, and I was happy to see the reduction. I'm respectfully going to vote no on this, just because when we originally did these designs, I voted no because I just kind of wanted the original signs, I just didn't think it was worth the cost. So again, I'm going to vote no on this, but I don't see any problems with the bid itself.
Okay. Commissioner Vatico, any comments, questions?
Actually, I'm in a hard spot right now. What was the original bid on this, the low bid that was disqualified?
Ninety-two thousand.
Yeah, ninety-something thousand, yes.
And what was the next higher one?
One hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Okay, so this is at about a hundred and six, if I remember right?
Eight, I think.
Yeah.
How much?
One oh eight.
One oh eight.
One oh eight, okay, I'm fine with that. If it was up around a hundred, and if we were back up to where we were on the first bid, I'd have an issue with that, so, okay. Thank you, mayor, that's it.
Thank you. Public comments, Ms. Manusus?
No emails, mayor.
Okay, Mr. Jump, anyone wishing to speak?
If anyone wishes to speak, please raise your hand. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you, we need a, we need a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
And roll call.
Mr. Vatico?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
No.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Merrill Housas.
Yes. The item twelve A and twelve B will be discussed together, but we're going to vote separately. So item number twelve is the HVAC repair and maintenance reject all bits for bid number two zero zero one fifty-nine B AM HVAC repair and maintenance contract. Mr. La Couris, staff report.
Yes, before Tom Funtz gives his report, as you remember those who were on the board last year, this was an item that there was a lot of discussion on. So we took that discussion from last year and put it into our efforts this year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tom to talk about the process and the reasons for the recommendation and to assure you that we put in one of the items that the board was requesting for the smaller bid orders, that we did consider that, and that is in this process. So I'll turn it over to Tom to talk about what went on this year with the bids and why we're recommending what we recommend.
Good evening, everybody, Tom Funtz, Public Works Director. I know as the last couple of years, air conditioning has been a very famous conversation here. So we had gone out with the concern, of course, possible hiring some local contractors or vendors to do our air conditioning work. Our conditioning work is extremely complicated, so we put the bid out with those opportunities, and of course, no one locally bid. There was one company that did bid a bit lower than the contract we're asking you to approve, about ten dollars an hour lower for their tech. But as I put the numbers together and look at the management side of it over here, the, those costs actually were much higher than going back to the original contract for a couple of reasons. One is the familiarity of the equipment. Should we bring another contractor in? Yes, the rates are a little bit lower, but I'd have to use existing personnel to escort them around the city. That's one of the main reasons, get familiar with the equipment, get familiar with the controls, the locations. So we take quite a bit of city time. The other part of this is also the control system for the building management system. We have four buildings, city hall, library, recreation center, and the public safety building. They're on a control system that train itself is upgrading the existing system, and they control it. Should we have an issue with one of those systems, the new contractor would not be familiar with it. You could have issues either mechanically or control system issue. If they came in and found out the issue was separate, you'd have to, again, call a second contractor to come in, check out the control system, and then coordinate those type of repairs. With train being on board, it's a one tech, they're cross-trained on both mechanical and the technical side of it. So again, it saves us a lot of time, and in the long run, saves us quite a bit of money. Along with this contract, it's a opportunities for other small businesses here in the city to bid on smaller units. There's about twenty-four units that are about two and a half to three ton. And depending on the time and the use, those units will be available if they go down, need replacing, be available to our local vendors. Since this is a non-exclusive contract that gives us the opportunity, actually do on any conditioners, but the most, the smaller ones and the more convenient ones, we could definitely put them out to bid, should time and again, use dictate that possibility.
Thank you, thank you, Tom.
No problem, I'm open for questions.
And I'm glad that we decided to give the opportunity to Tarper Springs companies to bid. But, you know, for the big, big systems that we have, they're very complex. It was the last year that the building, excuse me, the building director took us up there and shows the complex system that it's there. So I think it's very wise to have somebody who knows the system very well, and in the long run, will be more economical. But I'm very glad that our local businesses are going to have the opportunity to bid on the and to work on the twenty-four units, small units that we have.
Yep.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Carr?
Yeah, I just want to echo some of the things the mayor just said. Thank you to staff, to hearing us out from the last time we talked about this. I'm excited to have, obviously, AC is an important thing for all of us. So thanks, thanks again for what you guys have done.
No problem, you're welcome.
Commission Donovan?
Yeah, that's the same redundant, but I think the board did the right thing when we decided to look into this, and I appreciate staff's effort on it, but I understand where we're at.
Good, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Vatico?
Same way, mayor, keep it local anytime we can, thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to go to public comments, Ms. Manusus, any emails?
No emails were received, mayor.
Mr. Jump, do we have anyone that is wishing to speak on the item twelve A and twelve B?
If you would like to speak on these items, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
All right, hold on.
Well, thank you. I need a motion to approve item number twelve, which is the HVAC repair and maintenance reject all bits for bid number two zero zero one fifty-nine B AM HVAC repair and maintenance contract.
Move to approve.
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Vatico?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Merrill Housas.
Yes. Now we need a motion to approve the item number twelve B, which is the award file number twenty-one zero zero thirty-seven AM Euralize and US Communities Purchasing Alliance Contract Number fifteen JLP zero two three.
It's a move.
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Vatico?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Merrill Housas.
Yes. That takes us down to the item number thirteen. That takes us down to the item number 13, which is the Extension of Business Recovery Program. Staff report, Mr. Licorice.
Karen Lemons, do you want to just start off and go over this again, and then, then I'll follow up with an item?
Yes. Again, the Business Recovery Program was started back in May when the pandemic first hit. We allowed businesses to expand their outdoor dining onto nearby parking lots and public rights away, and we allowed all of our businesses to expand by putting additional signage and outdoor display of merchandise to help them advertise their businesses. And so for several months now, the board has been extending that month to month. In August, Hibiscus Street was reopened. And since then, in September, the governor did declare Phase Three reopening, which has opened now full capacity for our restaurants and our businesses. However, in talking with a lot of our businesses, the, the ability to continue to display either merchandise or their additional signage outside, and also the ability to maintain their outdoor tables and chairs is still very beneficial to them. People are still somewhat wary of venturing out, and, you know, we're getting into season. So we would like to continue to extend that for another month until Sunday, November 15.
Thank you, Ms. Lemons.
And just to add to that, I think we're coming to the time where we need to talk and get the board input on, you know, how long we're going to spend this. I'd like to give enough time to the businesses to notify them when this is coming to an end. You know, we don't know what's going to happen with the Phase Three, if it's going to cause commotion and go backwards or what, but we're getting to that point. Another factor we need to remember is, and it's not a subject of this, but we'll be talking about it. I'll be sending you tomorrow notice we're putting out. If you remember, the A-frame sign ordinance goes into effect in January. So that's a situation that's going to be, you know, occurring, and it kind of, kind of could go into this situation on some extended thing. So we're getting to the point where we may have to talk about how long we're going to continue this. And maybe, and so we give the businesses enough time that this is going to continue another 30 days, maybe another 60 days or... So I'd just like a little bit of discussion to see where the board is at on continuing this item.
Mr. Licorice, I don't know if you've received any complaints, but I haven't received any complaints, just compliments. And the business people are very, very happy that we still have that. And they're still suffering from the economic difficulties due to the coronavirus. I believe we should keep, you know, should continue this program for another month. I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners, so... Vice Mayor Carr?
I have no problem extending this further for the, for the, sorry, for the businesses here locally. I'm fine extending it to the end of the year as well. I don't think we're going to see any reprieve anytime soon, so, and then we can evaluate January, February.
Thank you. Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, I absolutely think we should extend this. I'm happy to extend it for longer. I guess, you know, we can cross that bridge when we come to it if we want in November, but I'm all for extending this. And in terms of the A-frame signs, I would definitely want to consider either postponing that or pushing that back to a later date, just because that's going to be, you know, at the end of December, we're going to say, hey, Merry Christmas, by the way. With everything going on, you're trying to recover, you spent 300 bucks on a new A-frame sign. So that is something that I would support pushing back. But again, I understand if that needs to be a separate item later on.
Thank you. Commissioner Vatici, any?
Thank you. I'm going to just drill down a little bit more on this thing before we start deciding these things. Are we violating any ordinances by this, you know, this outside display?
No, that, not by the action you're taking to extend it.
No, no, no. I'm talking about absent anything. If there wasn't a COVID thing, would there be any, would we be violating any of our ordinances?
Yes.
Okay. The A-frame signs, that date, that rollout date, is that tied to the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. My point is, at some point, this emergency order is going to go away altogether. Would I assume that that's going to be correct?
Yes.
Okay, so my feeling is, at some point, when that happens, which I doubt it's going to be next year, I don't want to extend it in violating our own codes outside any kind of an executive order, I guess is what I'm getting at. So if we're looking for a natural timeframe as far as ending this, I would think that we should tie it to when the emergency order ends. I guess that would be by Governor DeSantis. Would that be correct? City Attorney Trask is nodding his head, so I'm going to take that. If I could get some comments from the commission, maybe that would be the good ending point, that we could, we could share that with our businesses, if that would be acceptable. I don't think we can violate our ordinances outside of an emergency order, I guess is what I'm getting at. I mean, I guess we could, but that's being lawless, I think.
Well, this item here is to extend it for another month.
I know, Mayor, but the city manager was asking for some input as far as giving the businesses information of when they should expect that these courtesies are going to end. And I'm just trying to pin it down rather than sending a message that we may be here until the end of the year, which may not be the case. And all I'm saying is, from a practical perspective, I would think that the appropriate time would be when the emergency order is rescinded, and we're getting back to normal. And I don't think any of us want to violate our own city ordinances in that regard.
Well, let's ask the seat attorney for a legal advice. Mr. Trask, do we have the, do we have the right to do that as the local government?
You can tie your local state of emergency to the governor's executive order. The answer is correct. Yes, you can do that.
Okay, but what if the governor says that, or he does not extend his, his executive order? Can we, as a governor, continue, continue that? As a local governor, can we continue that?
You do have home rule powers, but they're all based upon the, the direction of where the way Pinellas County is treating the local state of emergency. So I would say to you, you would not want to extend the local state of emergency past what the governor's order says or Pinellas County's order says.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vatici, do you have any other comments?
No, that was it. Just trying to help the city manager provide some information to the businesses. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other commissioner, was you a comment on that?
I mean, I would just say that I want to be as lenient and friendly to businesses as, as long as we can here. I mean, I don't know how it's all going to shake out with the emergency orders. I guess, you know, we got to take that, you know, with a grain of salt whenever the, you know, governor renews his and doesn't renew his. I mean, but just overall, if we're talking about, you know, sending messages, I would like to see it be as friendly as it possibly can be to businesses for a long time. Because even when the emergency is technically done, businesses are still going to be in recovery.
Okay. Vice Mayor, do you want to comment on that?
I really don't have any other comments.
Thank you. We go to public comments. Ms. Manusus, any email?
No emails were received, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Jump, do we have anyone that is wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. We do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. The chair will attend a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
And roll call.
Can I just clarify? This is just till the November 15 date?
Yes, it's for a month.
Yes.
Mr. Badiotis?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus.
Yes.
Mayor, point of order, can I ask a question on that? The November 15 date, clarification on that? We just voted on November 15. Is that good timing, since the next meeting is November 17? City Manager Licorice?
We'd have to, we probably have to address the, we have to address it at the commission meeting the week before that, on the ninth.
The ninth, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, next is item number 14, 500 East Oakwood. Staff report?
Yes, I'll go ahead and start. Kevin Powell's been working with me on this item. This is an item that's went before the board, we all know, and those of you who have seen it. This is a dilapidated building in the Union Academy neighborhood. The residents have a lot of concerns about it because of their historical significance. You as a board, the last time you talked about this, asked us to go out there in the community and meet with the residents and, and get their concerns. You heard those concerns when we had the issue on the commission meeting. So what we're recommending, obviously, the biggest concern of Mr. Powell and of course, us in public safety, is the safety of that building. We're lucky with no stars, but that building is not a safe structure, and it needs to come down. What we're recommending to the board is to go forward with not a demolition, but as aptly as Kevin Powell can put it, a disassembly of the building, where we would, where we would take the building apart with the hope of keeping what is good within the building, catalog it, keep it for a later time when there's a decision of the board of what we're going to do with the property. So it accomplishes the purpose. It gets it down. It also preserves the materials that we find that are good in the building for, again, whatever we're going to do, create a monument, you know, try to rebuild the structure, anything we do will have that material. We've got the time to make those decisions on it. And we recognize what the community told us about the significance. We had them out there. They know the condition of the building. And again, I'll turn it over to Kevin if you've got anything to add to it, and anything to add to what I've said about, obviously, it'll be a little costly than taking a bulldozer and demolition and putting through it, but I think the value of this building and the property to the neighborhood will be worth, worth that extra cost. And again, Kevin Powell and Tom Function will be involved in this process of, of taking the building down with the contractor. Usually, you know, we piggyback on the Pinellas County contract, the demolition contract. We just got to make sure they'll do the demolition in this disassembly way. Kevin, you have anything to add, since it was your concept that you came up with on this?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Kevin Powell, Building Development Department Director. You know, understanding the historic significance of this building within the community kind of got me thinking, what can we do to try to save it and preserve as much as we can? I think the cost to try to rebuild what is there is going to be astronomical, and I don't think it's a good look for the city to come through with a bulldozer and push this building over. So in thinking about it, you know, why don't we look at disassembling, as Mr. Licorice said, and maintaining that material until we know what we can do? I did have a conversation today with Mrs. Dabs and explained it to her, and she, she did like the idea. That way, we were not officially tearing the building down, but it gives the commission time to decide how they want to move forward on it. You know, the cost of it is probably going to be close to double as to what it would be to just come in and tear it down and put it in the dumpster and haul it away. But I think the significant value of the structure to the community, you know, looking at, say, $10,000 to tear it down, and maybe roughly up to $20,000 to manually take it down and store this material versus engineering, shoring, and then deciding what we want to do. I don't think the cost difference is going to be that much. So I know Tom did reach out to the contractor today. I don't believe he's heard anything back from them yet for a price, but I think it's just a viable option for the community. Depending, any questions? I'm here.
Mr. Powell, thank you for the advice and for, you know, looking at the building very close. We know that the, the building has a historical significance. And I agree with you, recommendation, do disassemble and save all the usable parts for a later day. But I would like to ask for consensus of my fellow commissioners to schedule these, to rebuild this building next year, to preserve the history of the Union Academy, which is so important to Tarper Springs. So, Mr. Powell, thank you very much. With that, I would like to go to Vice Mayor Carr, and to keep in mind that I would like to see this building to be scheduled to rebuild the next year.
Mayor, I can't support that tonight. I appreciate your effort. But to me, we have a building that's a couple blocks over with a community center. The senior center is being put in that as well. As of now, I'm not sure. I believe there's not a need for another building two blocks over that's going to be rather a small footprint, and then another area for maintenance. To me, I think it makes sense to sell the property, to get it back on the tax rolls, or we could look at making some type of maybe small park for the neighborhood as well. But building a new building there just doesn't make sense to me. And then from tearing it down, you know, there's not a whole lot. I was out there with staff, looking at the different pieces of wood. There's, a lot of this building is termite-ridden. The roof is obviously metal, so that's not going to rot away. But this building has not been taken care of for years. So do I think the city owes it, owes the community to put some type of honorary plaque? I guess memorializing the building, a little bit of the history? Absolutely. But to rebuild it next year, I don't think that's the best choice to make, and also what the building would be used for. So with that, that's, that's where I stand tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I did have a question for Mr. Powell, I guess. Just how much material do you think is salvageable? You know, if we take it apart piece by piece, because I have been by there a couple times, and it just doesn't look to me like there would be much, much to save.
You might get maybe a quarter to a third of the building. The other thing you got to look at is the dimensional lumber that's in there. I mean, you have true two-by-fours and that type of material that's in there that if you're going to replicate or try to do things, it may be a little difficult in refurbishing it now. So, yeah, you might have about a quarter to a third of the, of the building of usable material. But, you know, to go into doing something in the future and having material available for that building, if the commission so chooses, would, you know, be, I think, a nice gesture to the community.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is a happy medium. I don't know, you know, for sure in the future what we could use it for, whether it would be rebuilding it or, you know, putting it in one of our cultural centers, or one of our museums, or City Hall even. I think, you know, it's definitely a building worth respecting, and I can appreciate the significance and the history of it. So I think this is the right route, and I appreciate staff's effort. As far as committing tonight to rebuild the building in the future, there's just too many questions that I would have to have answered. You know, I don't want to commit to build something that I don't know the cost of. I don't want to commit to build something where I don't know if it's going to be staffed. I don't know what the function of it's going to be, what the usage of it's going to be. So I guess that's my question, just for the future, is that, you know, I'm open to hearing any options, but I'm not going to commit to rebuilding anything that I don't know the cost of, or I guess the function of.
Thank you, Commissioner Vatici, any?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Donovan, would you be amenable to, including in the motion to discussing it during next year's CIP budget? Not committing to anything other than just discussing it?
Yes, sir, yeah. I mean, if we want to go ahead and discuss it, I'm all ears. I just, I would like the cost and function. The cost and the function.
I, I think that would be a good message to the, uh, Union Academy neighborhood that we're just not gonna take it away and, and people aren't gonna see it again. Um, Mr. Powell, that's excellent work on your part. Thank you for that stinking out of the box and I very much appreciate that. And I think the, uh, neighborhood would very, be very appreciative as well. And if, um, Ms. Dabs, um, I, I'm sure she's, she's, when she's happy, the world's happy, I can tell you that. So she's a very nice lady. Um, do, do we know where we're gonna store it yet?
I think we'll have to get with Tom Function on that and see what areas he has available for. We've kinda discussed it a little bit, but not fully until we know the direction that the commission wants to go.
Okay. And, uh, the mayor alluded to maybe discussing it next year during the, uh, CIP, which I'm, I would be supportive of that. Um, where, would we, would we store it, uh, the material? And by the way, the material, once it's disassembled, it's gonna be a lot more compact than what you see right now as it's standing, so... Um, would it be, um, someplace that might be weather tight so it doesn't further deteriorate from the weather?
Yeah, I'm not sure what Tom has. He, he should be on and, uh, he may have a location for it.
But, but I'm sure we would do it that way. There's no sense keeping if we're gonna let it be further, uh, destroyed. So I think that would be our goal to do and would be Tom's goal.
Yeah, we like, definitely, definitely gotta get one of the types. There's no doubt about that. Uh, and there's a couple options. Either the, uh, the old PD behind City Hall, depending how much material is left over, and there's even a possibility of a shipping container. You could also rent one of those or purchase one of those for it cheap and, and put that away there. Actually, even leave it on site if you wanted to, lock it up and the material will be there all the time. So, again, it's gonna be depend on how much comes out of the building too, so...
Um, let, let me ask you, uh, you mentioned the old PD, uh, the old classrooms, I would suspect. Is that right, City Manager La Course? The old classrooms we're talking about, uh, across from the, um, the City Clerk's office, the old cafeteria?
Was that what you were talking about, Tom?
Yeah, yes, I call it the old PD. I'm sorry, we repaired that a number of years ago. So I have some storage areas in the back that we could utilize.
Um, is, is that area gonna be tented anytime soon?
Uh, no, sir. No, it was done. We rebuilt that, uh, about five years ago, uh, completely. We did the interior and it's all to climate control.
Okay, there's two things. One, I, I would, I would recommend, not for any reason other than to, at this point, preserve the wood. Once it's disassembled, maybe we can find a, a fumigator to, um, to fumigate it, to kill the termites, especially if we're gonna store it indoors somewhere so we don't bring the termites back into a building that we tented five years ago. So I, I, that's the second part of that, to be smart about it. And I very much appreciate trying to store it indoors, so... Um, Mayor, when we get to the point, um, what I'd like to do is, is, uh, consider a motion to, um, approve the, um, the, uh, the disassembly of the building with the, um, uh, provision that it be brought back, uh, to the fiscal year twenty-two, uh, CIP, uh, budget for further discussion for rebuilding.
Uh, yes, we're gonna go to, uh, public comments first.
Yes, I just wanted to suggest that.
Uh, again, I'd like to comment that, uh, the, the residents of, uh, they like to see this, uh, structure to be rebuilt, uh, to preserve the history of the Union Academy. It's very, very important to Tarpin Springs, so we need to keep that in mind. Uh, with that, I'd like to go to the public comments. Uh, Mrs. Jacobs, have we received any emails?
No emails were received, Mayor.
Mr. Jump, do we have anyone, uh, wishing to speak on this item?
If you would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand at this time, sir. If you could please state your name and address for the record?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my, my, my name is Annie Debs and I would like to thank Mr... I would like to thank Mr. Powell for all of his work and I do agree with his recommendation because the history is very important to this neighborhood and I would like to see it given more thought perhaps next year as to what can be done with it.
Thank you, Ms. Dabs.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody else?
Anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. The chair will detain the motion.
Uh, move to, uh, approve the, uh, disassembly for rebuilding in the future and to schedule a discussion concerning rebuilding the building, uh, during the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two CIP.
Can I see a clarification? That's just to, uh, discuss it, right?
Just to discuss it. That, I think that's what Commissioner Donovan agreed to.
Second, then.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Rocco? Yes, Rocco.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Merrill Huusus?
Yes. Okay, we're now going to the ordinances and resolutions. Item number fifteen is the resolution two thousand twenty dash sixty-four, naming a portion of, uh, previously undeveloped road connecting Mears Boulevard and Mango Street. See the attorney if you please read the resolution.
Mayor Commissioners, resolution twenty twenty dash sixty-four, resolution of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, naming that portion of previously undeveloped roadway connecting Mears Boulevard and Mango Street between Safford Avenue and Distant Avenue and providing an effective date. That was a reading of resolution twenty twenty dash sixty-four by title only.
Thank you. Mr. Lee Curtis, do you have a staff report for us?
Uh, yes, I wanna thank, uh, Renee Vincent for putting this together for me. Again, this is a staff rate. We, it's come time that we need to make a decision. This is a recommendation, but obviously, we're open to, um, wishes of the board. So Renee, would you just go ahead and quickly go through, um, what we've done so far on this? And I, I know we have some information here from one of the commissioners and stuff, so we just go over our resolution and, uh, what our obligation is to, to name the roads.
Uh, certainly. So this is resolution twenty twenty dash sixty-four. Um, we, um, as part of the, uh, research, um, for this, which is included in all the whereas clauses, um, our naming authority comes under Article ten of the Code of Ordinances. So, uh, that's the guiding, uh, documents that was used to develop the resolution. Um, one of the things that we have to, to do is to, um, we have to provide a name for the, the unnamed roadway portion. Um, if you recall, there was a previous board discussion, uh, regarding options around this. Um, subsequent to that, we, uh, performed the historical research and specifically with the, um, uh, with respect to the existing Mango Street name, um, that does first appear on the nineteen-seventeen map of the town of Tarpin Springs, um, as well as the nineteen forty-four official zoning map and then the nineteen fifty-two plot of Toby Acres. So there's some historical significance to the existing Mango Street name on that portion of that ro... of the roadway. Um, also, uh, mentioned in the whereas clauses, again, is the recognition to, um, Dr. Diamandis and his contributions to, um, ensuring, you know, that this, this Mears Mango Quarter, uh, you know, come to fruition, um, and provide a uninterrupted east-west roadway from US nineteen, uh, to Florida Avenue, especially serving as a emergency, um, evacuation roadway. Um, so with that, what is proposed, um, is that the, uh, unro... unnamed road segment would be officially known as Mears Boulevard East. Uh, the existing roadway segment now known as Mango Street will retain its name as Mango Street. And then in recognition of, uh, the efforts of Dr. Diamandis through the years, um, that there would be an honorary, uh, roadway naming or memorial, uh, plaque or monument signage. So Attachment A shows the proposed roadway naming construct and then Attachment B shows the, um, the honorary memorial options, uh, for roadway signage. And then on page five of the, uh, agenda backup, you have a letter of support, uh, to retain Mango Street as a name, uh, as an official roadway name, um, from, uh, Mount Mariah African Meth... uh, African Methodist Episcopal Church. And then the last, um, attach... the last page of the attachment or the agenda backup is, um, two mockups of a potential... If you were gonna make the, the roadway name be Mears Boulevard all the way through, then showing Mango Street as either an honorary or historical, uh, signage below that. And that was, uh, added at the request of Commissioner Carr, so, um, I'll let him, uh, discuss that. So that's the staff overview, um, and, uh, as the resolution reads now.
Ms. Vincent, thank you. I, uh, support the resolution. It's exactly how, uh, I would like it to be. Thank you very, very much. Um, in the last meeting, I, uh, I stated that, uh, we need to get the input and the recommendation for, uh, from the residents. And, uh, all the residents are in favor to keep the Mango Street name as it is. It's very important to the neighborhood, so I would like to keep it as you have it on, uh, resolution from distant to US nineteen to keep it the way it is. And of course, the new street, the, the new portion of the road that we call Mears. And I also support, uh, to honor Dr. Diamandis and his in memory to place either a monument or some kind of a sign to, uh, to honor Dr. Diamandis. Uh, he was a terrific person, Dr. D. Uh, he served, uh, the community very, very well and, uh, I like to say that he was a very good friend of mine, that, so... Uh, we missed him. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I have a little bit different of a view on this one. Uh, first, I, I wanna say I do support, um, putting some type of honorary, um, road name for Dr. D on the new extension. Um, but in my opinion and based on talking to other residents throughout Tarpin Springs, uh, I really don't think it makes sense, um, to have two different names on this road. I think it should be Mears from Alter nineteen to US nineteen, or it should be Mango from US nineteen to Alter nineteen. Um, to have the name changed in the middle of this section without a major road, um, just doesn't make sense. Um, and to me, I, I believe Mears should be all the way through. I think we have a good example already in Tarpin Springs. Tarpin Springs used to have a Lake Boulevard or Lake Drive, uh, that ran from Spring Bayou out to US nineteen. Um, and Martin Luther King, uh, Boulevard was renamed, or Martin Luther King Drive was renamed. Um, it could have stopped at Alter nineteen, but it didn't. It continued all the way down to Spring Boulevard, uh, which in my opinion makes sense, that it continues all the way through. Um, so the two items that I would like to see is, I would like to either see Mears stop at Alter nineteen and Mango start there, but I think ultimately the best choice is to bring Mears all the way to US nineteen. And then you can see in your backup that you could keep the Mango Street as an honorary street name to recognize the history of Tarpin Springs in that area. And as a reminder too, there's two other Mango Streets that are in this area, or Mango names. There's a Mango Circle and there's also a Mango Loop, uh, that come out onto this road as well. So in my opinion, it should be Mears. And then my second option would be Mango, um, from Alter nineteen to US nineteen.
Thank you. Commissioner Donovan?
Uh, yeah, thank you to the board and staff for your work on this. Um, I'll start, uh, with Dr. Diamandis. Um, never had the opportunity to meet him. I've heard, you know, great things, uh, about him and his family and the community. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to do an, uh, you know, an honorable, or an honorary memorial sign. Um, I prefer it to be one of, you know, if you go to, um, slide four or page four, I prefer it to be one of the, uh, the standalone signs. Like in this example, it says Nolan Olson Memorial Highway or the Master Sergeant Sean T. Hanon Memorial Highway. I don't really like, um, any names underneath the actual street signs, like on our Attachment B example, or it has North Ave and then, you know, mentions a Don Sykes. I, I, I just think that's a little bit confusing when you look up at the sign, um, and it's a little bit cluttered. So I do support, uh, the honorary sign. I'd like it to be, um, a standalone sign on both sides, maybe facing opposite ways. Um, or, or a memorial. It doesn't have to be necessarily one of those, you know, um, crude kinda highway signs. It could be something more elegant. I'm, I'm fine with that as well. Um, I don't think it's, I, I don't see any issue, um, with going with what staff proposed in terms of Mango Street retaining its name and then Mango, um, being, you know, extended to Mango East but then stopping, or sorry, Mears being extended to Mears East and then stopping, um, with what Mango Street is on, on Attachment A there. Um, but overall, I mean, uh, as far as Commissioner, or sorry, as, as far as Vice Mayor Carr's, uh, comments, I guess if I had to choose a second option, my second option would be the preference of extending Mango Street all the way. Um, but overall, uh, I support, uh, the option that the mayor suggested.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, Commissioner Donovan, you were talking about the blue star sign for Dr. Diamandis?
Yeah, exactly. Either that one or the one on the far, the far left.
Okay. Yeah, I, I agree with that as well. Uh, keep it off the street signs and things of that nature, so, um, and, and that may be an opportunity that we could do that as part of the other historic signs as well and just kinda hold it somewhere until we get ready for it. Um, um, I, I think the naming, uh, convention where you've got one street and then it breaks off into another street is quite common for historic towns. Tarpin Springs is a historic town. Um, as Ms. Vincent said, that, uh, Mango Street shown on the map from nineteen seventeen, that's good enough for me. And, um, I'd like to keep it as it is with, um, uh, Mears East up to Distant, I believe, and then from Distant out to US nineteen as, uh, Mears, uh, I'm sorry, Mango, Mango Street. Mango Avenue, Mango, um, I'm sorry, Mango Street, Ms. Vincent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we go to public comments. Uh, Ms. Manusus, any emails?
No emails, ma'am.
Well, thank you. Mr. Jump, do we have any attendees wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand, sir.
Thank you.
If you can state your name and address for the record? We have a phone caller with seven-two-seven, ending in eight-zero-nine. Um, you are, um, allowed in to talk, so you would have to unmute yourself?
How do you unmute yourself, Mr. Jump? Can you tell them how to do that?
I'll have to look it back up.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Gwendy Davis. I live at five nineteen East Morgan Street here in Tarpin Springs. I was born here seventy-three years ago. And, uh, I would like to say that, uh, in reference to Mr. Carr's comment about separating the streets and the naming of Dr. King, uh, I don't know if he remember or not, but Dr. King's street stops at US nineteen because the residents on the east side of US nineteen did not want that name. And I feel that we need to keep this part in our community as Mango. It has history to it.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
Mr. Jump, do we have anybody else wishing to speak?
Yes, sir.
My, my name is Annie Debs. I reside at eight oh three South Distance. And I would like to see that the name Mango Street remain the same because of his his historical significance and importance to this neighborhood. And as, um, I heard and I do know, 'cause I remember when Lake Street, um, when Dr. King was Lake Street and it was changed and it only went to US nineteen and the residents did not want Martin Luther King over there. So we, the residents of this neighborhood, would like to see that Mango Street remain So we, the residents of this neighborhood, would like to see that Mango Street remain Mango Street and keep its history. I believe that all the history in Tarpon Springs is important. Everybody's history. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Debs.
I'll allow the next person in to talk.
Thank you.
If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Audrey Merrick, five seventeen East Boyce Street. And I would like to have the name, leave it as it is. It is part of Union Academy history. And we don't have a lot of anything left in our community and that would be a blessing to keep as is. Because other neighborhoods do have a lot of history. We don't have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, we do not have any other raised hands, sir.
Okay, well, thank you. And it's back to us. The chair will detain the motion.
Mayor, I have point of order on this. Ms. Vincent, how would you like, is it just to approve resolution as it's written in the title?
That would, that's what I would be asking for. I realize that I did leave the, how we do the honorary, you know, recognition of Dr. Diamandis kind of open. So if the board wishes to make a motion that, you know, clarifies that it should be a freestanding sign and not a roadway name sign, I'm happy with that.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty dash sixty-four, naming a portion of previously undeveloped roadway connecting Mears Boulevard and Mango Street as the resolution is written and also to make the sign commemorating a Dr. Diamandis, a fixed freestanding sign.
Second.
I'm sorry, did I hear second?
Yes, second.
Oh, thank you. And roll call, please.
Mr. Vatici Kuyters?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
No.
Mayor Alahuza?
Yes. Okay, next is item number sixteen, resolution twenty twenty dash sixty-two. Changes in fees for golf, golf course division. Senator Tenny, if you please read the resolution.
This is resolution twenty twenty dash sixty-two. The resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the fees utilized by the Golf Course Division of the Public Services Department, including changes to daily fees and annual membership fees and providing for an effective date here. Rob, there was a reading of resolution six title.
Thank you. Mr. Licouris, do you have any new information from the last discussion?
Terrell Paul, do you have any information, any further information on this?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Paul Smith, Public Services Director. And also joining us online is Howard Hunt, the Golf Course Manager. I'm going to ask him to give you a brief overview of what's proposed. But first, I just want to mention the golf course is an enterprise fund and fees are our source of income. It's been several years since we've made changes to the fees. And this item proposes to address two things. One, it'll provide additional discount to residents. And we also want to modify our rates with some small increases in certain areas that are low compared to market. The rates are proposed to take effect on January one and I'll ask Howard Hunt to give you a little bit more detail.
Thank you, Paul. Glad to be with you this evening. So as Paul said, we are proposing a few increases, small increases in our fees and rates. First, let me start by saying we have been offering a summer discount card to our Tarpon Springs residents over the last couple of years. And with everything that's been going on with the pandemic and whatnot, we would like to extend that to our residents in Tarpon Springs year round. So starting January one, we would like to have the Tarpon Springs residents get a three dollar discount. And the discount card will be free of charge for the entire year. Include peak season, French season and summer season. Our increases are in membership, as Paul said. We're proposing a nine percent increase in our membership prices, which I think is very minimal. Will be less than ten dollars a month, the membership rates. And that will take in effect January first. Also, we are proposing a few small increases of only a dollar to three dollars in some of our weekday league rates, our twilight rates and our super twilight rate. These rates will keep us fiscally sound, I think, for the next year. And also, you know, gives the opportunity to stay within our area guidelines to keep us a great value in Pinellas County. And that's my proposal.
Thank you. I'm not a golfer, but I would like to ask you is, are those prices compatible to the other golf courses in the area?
Very compatible, Mayor. As a matter of fact, we will remain below our other area golf courses in not only our membership fees, but also our daily fees.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Carr, any comments or questions?
No. Thank you, Howard.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I like golf, but golf doesn't like me. I've been finding it the hard way. But I just want to say, I've been, I've been to Tarpon, you know, probably about a dozen times now lately. And I just, I really want to say I appreciate Mr. Hunt and his staff there. They do a great job.
Thank you. Commissioner Vatici Kuyters?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't golf. I used to golf and my last round of golf was at Tarpon Springs Golf Course. That's because we didn't have Rangers. Do we have Rangers now? A lot of the old geezers wouldn't let us play through, but I guess I'm an old geezer now, so maybe I should take up golf again. I'm very proud of our golf course. I was city manager when we took it back and made it a municipal golf course, took it out of the lease and made it an enterprise son's enterprise fund. So y'all do a terrific job out there. I know there's been a couple of golf course managers. And Mr. Hunt, I'm glad to see you. I've not seen you before, but I'm glad to recognize you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public comments? Ms. Manusus, any emails?
No emails were received, ma'am.
Mr. Jump, do we have any, anyone wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. We need a motion?
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Vatici Kuyters?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza?
Yes. Next is item number seventeen A Eagle Creek Development, David Weekly Homes, the application twenty dash seventy-three, twenty dash one oh four, six eighty-seven Klosterman Road. This is the ordinance two thousand twenty dash twenty-one land use development to preservation. This is the second reading. Mr. Tenny, please read the ordinance.
Yes, this is ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-one in ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, meaning the future land use map for two point three nine acres more or less of real property located at six eighty-five and six eighty-seven East Klosterman Road on the northeast corner of East Klosterman Road and South Distin Avenue. Application twenty dash seventy-three. From the land use designation of RL residential low to land use designation P preservation, providing for findings and providing an effective date. The legal advertising was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on July twenty-nine, twenty twenty, September second, twenty twenty.
Thank you. Staff report, Mr. Licouris?
I'll go ahead and jump in. This is application twenty dash seventy-three from David Weekly Homes. This is the second reading of a land use map amendment from residential low to preservation. This is associated with the Eagle Creek Plan Development subdivision. There's been no, I have no new information to enter into the record between first and second reading and staff recommendation is to approve this on second reading.
Thank you. I have no comments or questions. Vice Mayor Carr?
I have no, nothing further.
Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Vatici Kuyters?
Good evening, Mr. Panny. I just want to say hi. I have no comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to public comments. Ms. Manusus?
No emails were received, Mayor.
Mr. Jump, do we have anyone wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. The chair will detain the motion.
We have Ms. Tara Panny here. I don't know if she wants to speak, Mayor. Cindy Tara Panny?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm just here to answer any questions. This was a pretty straightforward amendment and the staff has covered all the items, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Panny? We hear none. The chair will detain the motion.
Motion over.
Second.
And roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next is item number eighteen A Habitat for Humanity for Pinellas County, of Pinellas County, application twenty eighty Cypress Street Lot. The ordinance twenty, twenty twenty dash twenty-four zoning. This is the second reading. And this is a quasi judicial. The city attorney will read the ordinance and it will explain the quasi judicial process.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-four in ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, meaning the official zoning map of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida for zero point three four acres of property located on the north side of Cypress Street between North Levis Avenue and North Gross Avenue from R seventy A, single-family residential district to R sixty, one and two-family residential district, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. The legal advertising was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on September two, twenty twenty. I'll explain the quasi judicial procedures. This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. I'd like to go ahead and swear in Ms. Vincent. I believe that she'll be making presentation. Here, here you are. All right, you raise your right hand, please. You swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You can go ahead and proceed.
Thank you. This is application twenty dash eighty from Habitat for Humanity for property located on Cypress Street between North Levis and North Gross Avenue. The proposal is to rezone the property from R seventy-eight to R sixty. The purpose of this is to allow two single-family lots to be created. Again, this is second reading of the proposed ordinance and there's no new information to enter into the record. And staff recommendation is to approve this on second reading.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Vincent? Don't see any.
No.
Is the applicant present? Who would that be, Renee? Is that Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Okay, sir, I'm going to have you raise your right hand and be sworn under oath. You swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, would you like to make a presentation to the commission?
No, I just wanted to thank the commission and staff again for presenting this to us on behalf of Habitat for Humanity. And if everything goes well, we look forward to building two more houses and providing affordable housing within the City of Tarpon Springs.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any questions from the commission?
I don't have a question, but I would like to comment to Mr. Rush. Mr. Rush, this is a great program and I would thank you for providing a home to a family in Tarpon Springs. Thank you very much.
Michelle, has there been any emails from the public received?
No emails were received.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item?
If anyone would wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. It's back for the commission's consideration.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments on this item? Hear none. The chair will detain the motion.
Motion over.
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Vatici Kuyters?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza?
Yes. Next, we have item nineteen A and also nineteen B. Nineteen B is a quasi judicial. And these items are related, so we're going to be discussed together, but we're going to vote separately. Item number nineteen A is Rainey Property, application twenty dash seventy-six, twenty dash one ten, sixteen oh six and sixteen twenty-eight Dixie Highway. The ordinance two thousand twenty dash twenty-five annexation. This is the second reading. Mr. Trask?
Yes, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and read ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-five by title only. In ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing zero point four two acres more or less of real property located at sixteen oh six Dixie Highway on the northeast corner of Dixie Highway and Beckett Way. And at sixteen twenty-eight Dixie Highway on the east side of Dixie Highway between Beckett Way and July Drive. Application twenty dash seventy-six, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. Legal advertising is published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on September second, twenty twenty and September ninth, twenty twenty. I'll read the quasi judicial hearing procedures again. This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi judicial rather than legislative capacity. At the quasi judicial hearing, it's not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that's already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and to apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. So Ms. Vincent, you've already been sworn in. You don't need to be sworn in again. Do you have a presentation that you would like to make on these matters?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Again, this is application twenty dash seventy-six and twenty dash one ten for property located at the northeast corner of Dixie Highway and Beckett Way. The application are, the applications are for annexation and for rezoning from the Pinellas County designation of R four to the City of Tarpon Springs designation of R seventy. And the, if you recall from first readings, the applicant is annexing in in order to obtain city services. There's no new information for the, to be entered into the record between first and second reading and staff recommendation is to approve on second reading both the annexation and the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any commission questions of Ms. Vincent? No, don't see any raised hands. Okay, is the applicant present?
Hey there, we're here.
Okay, Miss Ken, I want you to raise your right hand. And I'm going to, sorry, you're under oath. You swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there anything that you would like to add today?
No, so if I understand this correctly, tonight was the second reading?
That's correct.
And when will the annexation be complete?
It will not, it will not take in effect until November the fourth, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, November the fourth, after the election, then will be.
If this, if the Commission goes ahead and approves the ordinances, the answer is yes. Do you have any presentation that you would like to make?
No, sir. I don't really. I just had some questions about that. I was unclear as to when the annexation would go through. And is this our, our final reading tonight or is there another one yet next month?
This, this is it tonight. If the Commission approves it, it'll be approved.
Okay. And then I could go forward with my impact fees and everything like that, correct?
You can contact the city in the morning once it's approved and they'll be happy to, to help you.
Okay.
Does the Commission have any questions of the applicant?
No.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Meneses, do we have any emails for this?
No emails. No emails.
Okay, Mr. Jump, is there anyone with raised hands in the audience that would like to speak on either one of these items? The annexation or the rezoning?
If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor. It's back to the Commission for consideration. I will need to read the second ordinance though, when you're ready.
Are there the Commission comments on this item? If not, the Chair will detain the motion for the ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty five, the annexation.
Motion approved. Second.
In roll call, please.
Vaticius?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza?
Yes. The item number nineteen B is the ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty six rezoning, and this is the quasi-traditional.
Yes, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and read ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty six, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, mending the official zoning map of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida for zero point four two acres, more or less, of real property located at sixteen oh six Dixie Highway and sixteen twenty eight Dixie Highway from Pinellas County, R four, one, two, and three-family residential district. The City of Tarpon Springs, R seventy, one and two-family residential district, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. There's the second final reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty six by title only. The legal advertising was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on September second, twenty twenty.
This item has been discussed, so I need a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Vaticius?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza?
Yes. Next is item number twenty, resolution twenty twenty dash sixty five. Attorney, if you please read.
Resolution twenty twenty dash sixty five, Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying Executive Order twenty twenty dash thirty four and extending the declaration of local state of emergency to October sixth, twenty twenty, and providing for an effective date hereof. That was the reading of resolution twenty twenty dash sixty five by title only.
Thank you. Mr. Decourts, do you have any comments?
I don't have anything to add.
Thank you. Are there any Commission comments on this item? We hear none. Public comments, Ms. Jacobs?
No.
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Meneses?
No emails, Mayor.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Mr. Jump, do we have anyone that are wishing to speak?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Vaticius?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza?
Yes. Next is item number twenty one, resolution twenty twenty dash twenty five, the application twenty dash ninety one, conditional use for tourism home in WD one, eleven forty five Marina Drive, Mason. This is a quasi-traditional. Mr. Attorney, if you please, read the resolution and explain the quasi-traditional process.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this is resolution twenty twenty dash fifty five, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number twenty dash ninety one, requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a tourist home at eleven forty five Marina Drive, located in the south side of Marina Drive in the WD one waterfront development district, zoning district, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing and for an effective date. That was the reading of resolution twenty twenty to fifty five by title only. This is a quasi-traditional proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-traditional rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-traditional hearing, it is not the Board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-traditional hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. Ms. Vincent, you've already been sworn in, so if you have a presentation to make, you can go ahead and proceed with that.
Thank you. For the purposes of this one, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen as soon as I figure that out again. Okay. And can everybody see? My screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. So this is application twenty dash ninety one for property at eleven forty five Marina Drive. And this application and the next application are virtually identical, so I'll go into a little more depth on the first go around, but the recommendations and, and recommend, recommended conditions are virtually identical. Anclot Isles is a, is developed as a single-family subdivision. It's located south of Anclot Road on the Anclot River. It was developed back in the mid nineteen nineties. Interestingly, this property actually is zoned WD one and has a commercial recreation land use map category, and that goes back to the nineties as well. And so when this property was actually developed, the, the, the subdivision itself required an actual conditional use because single-family is also a conditional use in this particular zoning district. So the request before you this evening is for conditional use for a tourist home. To, to kind of go a little more into depth, the commercial recreation, future land use category, as well as the WD one zoning district, their intent really is to provide for tourist-oriented development adjacent to the Anclot River. And I just want to kind of reiterate that the, the land use and zoning played a very large factor into the staff recommendation on both of these applications. Here's a, just a copy of the survey. These are single-family homes. They're not, you know, they're, they're not huge. They're, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two hundred square foot homes. So nothing, you know, these aren't, you know, big party mansions or anything. Under the conditional use review criteria, we do find that it generally, if these are conditioned well and the applicant, and the, the operators and owners of the, of a tourist home operate them accordingly, that they can be compatible, you know, with, with the neighborhood. And again, we are, you know, cognizant of the fact of the, the history, history of the land use and zoning on this property and that this is a tourist-oriented area. I do want to go into what, well, let me finish this. So, you know, in context with the conditions that we're recommending, and there are an extensive set of conditions on the application, or actually in, in the conditional use. You know, we think that these, you know, can be compatible, and so from the staff perspective, we are recommending approval. For the record, I'm going to read the conditions directly from the, from the resolution that we are recommending. The Planning and Zoning Board did review this on September twenty first and did recommend approval with one member voting in opposition. So for the record, staff recommendation is conditional use of, is, is approval of the conditional use with the following conditions. The property shall remain a single-family residence rented as a single, single living unit. The maximum occupancy shall be no more than two persons per bedroom plus two persons in one common area, not to exceed more than ten persons total, whichever is less. A minimum of one off-street designated parking space and garage spaces are, are included shall be provided for every three occupants. The property owner or designee shall be available in a timely manner to respond to inspections, complaints, or other problems related to the tourist home use of the property. The duties of the responsible party are to be available by telephone at the posted phone number to handle any issues arising from the tourist home use. If necessary, be willing and able to come to the tourist home following notification from an occupant, owner, law enforcement, or city official to address issues related to the tourist home use. Be authorized to receive service of any legal notice on behalf of the owner for any violations of city laws, ordinances, or terms of the conditional use. And otherwise regularly monitor the tourist home property to assure compliance with city laws, ordinances, and terms of the conditional use. The owner must provide an affidavit that the following has been posted on the back of or next to the main entrance door or on the refrigerator at the tourist home property. The name, address, and phone number of the tourist home responsible party. The maximum allowable occupancy of the tourist home in accordance with the terms of this conditional use. The maximum number of vehicles that can be parked in the designated parking area of the tourist home in accordance with the terms of the conditional use. The noise standard in accordance with terms of the conditional use. The days of trash pickup and recycling, location of the nearest hospital. The building shall be maintained with the following: one smoke detector in each sleeping area, one smoke detector in the common hall between sleeping areas. Smoke detector shall be of the ten-year lithium battery style, and a fire extinguisher shall be provided and shall have annual inspections. The applicant shall obtain and maintain the City of Tarpon Springs business tax receipt for the tourist home use. At the time of application, the applicant shall provide the contact information for the responsible party as listed in conditions four herein, and shall provide a, an affidavit attesting to compliance of the tourist home with the conditions, numbers five and six herein. If the business tax receipt lapses for a period of more than six months, a new, a new review of the conditional use will be required. And the applicant shall comply with the requirements of Pinellas County Tax Collector and all other local and state requirements. So that is a lot of conditions. I realize that's a lot. I wanted to read them into the record. Many of those conditions I borrowed, if you will, directly from the Pinellas County Code of Ordinances and how they regulate short-term rentals. So we have received both letters in opposition as well as letters or, or emails in support. And you later on, and directly as a result of both this and the next application, we have received a petition from fifteen of nineteen residents, or homes, you know, homes in this particular subdivision requesting that the property, the entire subdivision be rezoned and land use amendment taking, taking it back to strictly a single-family residential subdivision, which is what it appears to be on its surface. With that, I will stop there and answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Renee, can you take off your screen share?
Yes, I sure will.
Thank you. Does any, do any of the Commissioners have questions for Ms. Vincent?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So thank you, Renee, for the presentation. So when this neighborhood was built, it was under conditional use as well for a single-family home?
It was.
Okay. And then there's a, there's currently conditional use available for the vacation homes, which is the recommendation by staff, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Is this a, an HOA neighborhood or is this a, a public road neighborhood? How is that?
Um, I believe, it's public, but there is a homeowners association active, I believe.
All right. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Vaticius, did you have questions?
Thank you, Mr. Trask. I, I, this is a challenging one for me. I, I know people on both sides of this. I know the neighborhood very well. And I'm going to proceed as fairly as I can in this matter. I do have some questions from Ms. Vincent. Do we have any other conditional uses other than the ones Vice Mayor spoke? I mean, besides a single-family home that's been issued? Any other tourist home conditional uses for this neighborhood?
In this neighborhood? Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. And we, how many homes are we talking about?
There are nineteen homes in the subdivision, and tonight you have conditional use applications for two of them for tourist homes.
Okay. Ms. Vincent, I hate to ask, but could you put your screen share back on with a map of the neighborhood showing the location of the home?
And can you see that?
Yes. Could you point out with your arrow where this, these nineteen homes are and the entrance that goes into it?
Certainly. So the entrance comes off of Anclot Road here, and you come across a little bridge, and then this is the, the entire subdivision. These are the nineteen homes.
Okay. And the two estates to the north, I know, are in the, single-family homes?
The, the property directly to the north is that a single-family, that's unincorporated Pinellas County jurisdiction.
Right. And then the property to the east is Anclot Isles Marina.
Correct.
And I was city manager when this development was put together, and basically the WD one, actually, it's kind of the, the tail wagging the dog. The Marina was driving this whole project, so this has always been supposed to be fam, single-family homes, whether it's a conditional use or not. It's just a figment of the zoning. The other question I had was in your presentation, and I, and I, I'm just asking out of curiosity, you said that this is, leave that map on for a second. You said that this is a tourist-oriented area. How, how would you explain that? I mean, I, I, go ahead.
Sure. I just, generally looking at, at the context of, you know, of the larger area, you know, this area of Tarpon Springs, you know, is recognized as, you know, as a tourist area. You know, if you're looking at just, you know, this subdivision of itself, you know, then yes, it's single-family. I would agree with that.
Well, we've got that. We've got the two estates to the north, and then further north is the Ryland subdivision.
Correct.
And then we've got the individual Marina to the right, to the east, and then, of course, all of Anclot Isle, Anclot Island Avenue down to the south, that little peninsula is all commercial. I, I just want to make sure that these, actually, these little areas, pockets of residences are, are islands of residences, so. And it's only one way in and one way out of that neighborhood, but thank you, Ms. Vincent. You've answered my questions and allowed me to make a couple of points on this from my perspective to make sure I understood what I was looking at.
Okay, Renee, can you unshare, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I have a question for Ms. Vincent as well, if, if I may.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
My just one question, and this comes up pretty much every time we get a conditional use, is the standards for review number five, the conditional use will not adversely affect adjoining property values. That seemed to kind of be like a central complaint from some of the neighbors that we're, we're sending in. So what's, what's staff's perspective on the actual effect of neighboring property values?
Yeah, again, you know, our, our recommendation on this, you know, really takes a large cue from, you know, the fact that the, what the land use and the zoning is on the property. And again, you know, if a tourist home is operated with respect to, you know, respectfully to the surrounding properties, staff is of the opinion that that should not adversely affect the property values, but, you know, if they're a nuisance, then, then that, you know, it, it's a, it's an interesting kind of cascading effect, you know, if property starts selling at a loss. I mean, that, that's what, you know, that's what establishes your property values is, you know, what, what is my value, you know, how is my property valued? What, you know, what do I pay in taxes? So it really, you know, does this, you know, beg people to start selling because they don't want to live next to a tourist home? And I think that really bears, you know, on, or is dependent upon how that tourist home is operated, so. I don't think that probably fully answered your question, but that's the best answer I have at this point.
Okay, I appreciate it. That was my only question for now.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and have the applicant sworn in. Mr. Mason, I see you're here on. If you could take your mute off. Unmute yourself. Okay.
Yes.
If you're going to testify, I need you to raise your right hand and be sworn under oath. You swear that the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and if you could state the name and your relationship to the property, please?
I'm Richard Mason.
My wife Rebecca Tuma Mason, we're the, we're the owners of the home here.
Okay, now's your opportunity to make a presentation to the commission if you'd like to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, commissioners, staff, and everyone. Appreciate your time tonight and really appreciate what you do every time, every day for us in the beautiful city of Tarpon Springs. We, we love Tarpon Springs. We've been here a good number of years. We had this home built back in ninety-six, I think, so about twenty-three years now. Because of financial reasons, we had to take a job out of state. We come back and forth often. We didn't know conditional use permit was required, so we have been doing this short-term vacation rentals to families for almost seven years now with no problems whatsoever.
Never, never a single neighborhood complaint has come to us with the exception of a parking complaint from a neighbor that we dealt with immediately.
Yeah, so I mean, we've been, we're very, very careful. We love this area. We love our neighbors. We love our neighborhood. We want to retire here. We were really careful to only rent to families that are looking for a quiet. We have even, you know, to some extent stricter requirements because it's our home. We don't want people to, to trash it. We don't want people to come here for a party. They come here for a beautiful water view, to visit the sponge docks. We're delighted that we could provide a place where people can stay longer in Tarpon Springs and enjoy the restaurants. And we've been happy to pay quite a bit in our sales taxes here to further help the, the community. And we, we just want to make sure that everybody understands that this is more than just, it's not like this is a bed and breakfast or a hotel. It's a single-family home, and we really try to keep it that way. In that time, never one phone call from anyone other than the next-door neighbor, which, as my wife said, we, we dealt with immediately, and we would continue to deal with. We have a lot of local people that also help support us, those that we know very well. We know, love, and trust them. They're, some of them are even family members, responsible parties that are local, right nearby, a number of them. Plus, we, we can, we're always available as well to take calls and, and respond.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicants?
Mr. Trask, I do.
Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Mason?
Yes.
I would like to ask you a couple of questions. How many bedrooms does the house have?
We have four bedrooms.
Four bedrooms. You know, the maximum occupancy is up to ten people. You can have up to ten people. So how many parking spaces do you have to accommodate ten people?
We have room for three vehicles in our driveway. We don't rent to ten. That's too many for us.
We don't allow ten.
We limit it to nine, and usually my wife doesn't even like to go to nine unless it's, unless three of them are children. The fourth bedroom is really only conducive to children. We're careful to tell our guests that.
One of the restrictions is the property owner or designee must be available in any, available in a timely manner to respond to complaints or problems. Looking at your address, it shows you, your address is in Hillsboro, Oregon. How can you be here on time?
We have a number of people. Fran Antonellis, for example, a good, close friend, she meets almost every guest face to.
Okay. It looks like Mr. Mason has frozen there, a bad connection. Hopefully, he can join us back. Let's wait a moment. Mr. Mason, can you hear us?
Mr. Jump?
Yes, sir.
Can you see if, if we can connect him? I mean, have you seen him?
They have disconnected from Zoom. It looks like they might be trying to reconnect.
And Scott Underwood, can you put your, your phone on mute, please? We're getting a reverb back through you. Thank you.
Mr. Trask, I'm finished with my questions. I'll head to.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's just see if they hop back on the line. Okay, Mayor, I, I would suggest we're waiting for them to come back online since we don't have, we don't want to just wait forever, is to go ahead and move forward with the public presentations. And so I would ask Ms. Menusus, and we'll come back to Mr. Mason if he gets back online. Were there any emails that you received from the public on the, on the, this agenda item?
No emails were received to be read into the record.
Thank you. So, Mr. Jump, let's find out if there's anybody in the public that has joined in, wants to speak on this matter.
If you would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in. And I'll allow the first person with the raised hand in.
Thank you.
I don't see any way to raise my hand, but this, this is.
Merle, we'll call you in just a few minutes. We've got someone else, but I can see you there, so I'll definitely call on you.
Okay.
Okay. So I have an Alan.
Yeah, yeah, hi. I, I mean, I actually sent in an email.
Okay, sir, I'm going to stop you for just a second. If you could raise your right hand and be sworn under oath? You swear, you swear the testimony about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So what did you want to tell the commission?
So I actually sent an email. So I don't know why it didn't get registered, but, look, I mean overwhelmingly, more than eighty percent of the, you know, people here signed a petition that said, you know, we really don't want this. This is a residential neighborhood, is not a commercial neighborhood. I, I think the, I would, I would hope that the commission would respect the neighborhood's view on whether we should allow this or not, whether it's an appropriate use. That's, that's all I've got to say.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go to Mr. Seaman. I know that you're there. You raised your right hand.
Yes.
I'm going to have you sworn in, under oath, sir. You raised your right hand. You swear the testimony about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and make your presentation, sir?
Okay. And I'm, I'm, I'm speaking now basically for both of these items, even though we're talking just on the one. So in the interest of brevity, if you don't want me to say it a second time, I, I won't because my comments are exactly the same for both items. As a property owner in Anclot Isles, I'm against both of the conditional use permits. There's several reasons for that. Our neighbors, neighborhood's very quiet and contains only nineteen homes. Both of these properties have been conducting short-term rentals without a permit for a number of years, and there have been numerous times when the people staying at these properties have caused problems and concerns for the fellow property owners that live in the neighborhood. I personally had an occasion several years ago when a convicted felon came to my door and requested to use my telephone. He was staying at one of the homes, and he needed to call in to his parole officer. The, the owners of the properties say that they vet the people very thoroughly, but they can't control who may be coming with those people. You know, that's, that's one of my concerns. Parking has been an issue. Sometimes there are five or six cars. Driveways have limited space, and they spill out onto the street, potentially causing problems for emergency vehicles. Noise has been an issue at times, especially for our friends who are on one side or the other of the properties. There have been loud parties by the pool, and there have been times when they commented to, to the residents and, and were not responded to appropriately by the people that were staying there. But the, in truth, my biggest concern is potential damage to our property values that would result from a change in the quiet character of this neighborhood. I'm certain that I would not consider buying one of the homes that's next door to one of these two houses because I would not want to live with being right next door to it. And I would imagine most people would feel the same way. That hurts those people's property values. It can't help but hurt it. If we wanted to deal with short-term tenants, we would have bought a home at the beach in a busy resort area, not in the quietest, quietest little island in Tarpon Springs. The property owners are going to say that restricting the numbers of people and cars and providing local oversight will keep the homes from becoming an issue for us. But history tells me this is simply not the case. The property owners are a hundred miles away, and they really have no idea what goes on when they're gone. The fact that they feel like this is not an imposition to us tells me they don't know what's going on. Having somebody and tell the partying residents to be quiet or to move their cars or address whatever other issue comes up is not a solution. It's too late. We've already been bothered. The right to quiet enjoyment of our homes has already been disrupted by the time anyone could get here to deal with an issue. I encourage you to vote no on the conditional use permits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seaman. Mr. Jump, is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak?
Yes, we do have another raised hand.
Okay. Could you please let him or her in?
Mr. Trask, can I just clarify the previous speaker, Mr. Cosi? He did send an email directly to the Board of Commissioners on September twenty-fourth.
Okay. Thank you. So it looks like Marie Dubach? Is that correct? Okay. You can raise your right hand. I'm going to swear you're under oath. You swear the testimony about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, that is correct. I do.
Okay. Go ahead and proceed.
We also sent an email. We sent it on the eleventh of October, and I'm going to read it. As property owners and residents in the Anclot Isles subdivision, we are opposed to the approval of the two conditional use permit applications, twenty-ninety-one and twenty-ninety-two, to allow short-term rentals at eleven-ten Marina Drive and eleven-forty-five Marina Drive. Specifically, we are becoming tired of having strangers residing in our neighborhood weekly and are worried of the crowds, parties, trash, traffic, and noise that have been associated with these rentals over the years. We also feel that this situation is detrimental to the quality of our neighborhood. We did not purchase our home in Anclot Isles with the expectation that we would live directly next to a hotel, especially during the time, and concern about the spread of COVID-19. With respect to the rezoning request, we are now in a WD-1 zone, which apparently allows homes to be used as short-term rentals with conditional use permits. Until the zoning meeting regarding the conditional use permits, we were unaware that our neighborhood was not zone residential. Our neighborhood is small, quiet, and being made up of only nineteen single-family homes. There are no land uses on our island or neighborhood beyond that of single-family residences. As a result of the above, we have submitted a petition to the City Planning Commission to modify our zoning to an appropriate single-family-only classification. And we appreciate you taking this up.
Consideration.
And, and consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
We do have another raised hand, sir.
Okay. If you could let that person in?
Yes. I'm, this, I'm Scott Underwood.
Okay, sir, if you could raise your right hand?
Yep.
You swear the testimony about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. You know, we're, we're not speaking on your application yet. Did you still want to comment on the Mason application?
I just wanted to make a general comment on the, you know, the Water Flump Development District. You know, I, when, I guess when both of us purchased our house, that was the zoning. I guess that I don't know about, you know, being punished for something that's allowed in this, in this district. I don't think that the other homeowners that don't expect to have a business or a tourist home in this, when you're in this zoning district, maybe they didn't know about it, but maybe you should ask if you're buying a multi-hundred-thousand-dollar house, I suppose, what, what the zoning district is. But we bought our house, they, you know, they purchased, you purchase your house and, you know, you go by the zoning that, that your house is in. And so that's, you know, that's what, that's what the Masons have done, and that's what we've done. And part of that zoning was to promote the businesses of the sponge docks. And I guess that's all I'll, I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jump, is there anyone else?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. We're going to go back to, we're going to go back to the Masons.
Mr. Mason is back. Would you allow him to finish?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Mason, you were being asked a question by the mayor. He's completed his question. Did you hear the question?
I did. I heard the question. I apologize for the dead battery. I don't know how that worked. I apologize.
Did you want to respond to the question?
I did. I, I, I began to. We have a, a local friend that we, we've known a long time, Fran Antonellis, who lives locally, and she meets almost every single guest face-to-face. Not now during this COVID. She stays a little further away. But she's local, as is Chris Aldrich, as is two of the ladies who help clean, that also oversee. We also have, the Hughleys live about four hundred yards away. And they also do repairs and maintenance and look after things as well. Lots of local people that we, that we know, love, and trust.
All right. Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions of the applicant, Mr. or Mrs. Mason?
I've got a quick question.
That's what? Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thanks. How do you market your property? Do you market it like on collegekids.com or is it like on Airbnb or VBR? How's that? Can you share a little with me?
Yeah, VRBO and Airbnb. We're careful not to do two-night or three-night. We don't want party people. We don't do spring breakers. And, and, and if you'd like me to, I'd like to respond to the comments that were made. Is, is now a good time to do that as well?
Why don't we just finish with the questions from the commissioners first, and I'll give you the opportunity to do that. Do you have any other questions, Vice Mayor?
No, I was just curious where they list their property at. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Vaticios, do you have questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Trask.
Commissioner Donovan in a moment.
Mr. Ms. Mason, thank you for being resident for such a long time, nineteen ninety-six. That is a long time, and I'm hoping to, regardless of how it goes this evening, that you remain resident. I know you're in Oregon, and I hope you come back for the long term or stay with us for the long term, however you'd like to put it.
We will, certainly.
How many times per year do you normally rent?
I'm going to let my wife answer that. She does most of the interviewing and, and responding.
We rent about twenty-five to thirty-three weeks a year.
Twenty-five to thirty-three weeks a year. Okay. And out of curiosity, what, I, I know you've been doing this for seven years, and I, I understand that. What made? Um, what made you come to apply for a conditional use now or is that something that the city, uh, did or, or you just decided to?
Yes, we.
We were notified that, uh, it was required to have a conditional use, so we immediately, um, applied, um, you know, paid for. Uh, we meet all the stipulations already, um, of the conditional use. Uh, the only thing remaining is, um, you know, this, this meeting, if you find in favor and the, um, and the affidavit.
Okay, uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Trask.
Uh, Commissioner Donovan, did you have questions?
Yeah, um, those actually were a couple of my questions. I just, I also wanted to know how, how often you guys are actually living in Oregon versus here?
Well, right now, we come in the winter, uh, towards the end of the year. My wife usually stays, uh, longer than I because I'm still working, but, uh, you can tell by the gray hair that that may not go for too much longer, in which case we'll be here, you know, much longer. But, uh, right now it's, it's, uh, it's towards the winter. We were November, uh, last year and, and, uh, but normally it's, uh, December to January.
Okay. This year we're here for four months.
Yeah, we're here longer this year, but, you know.
And extra blessed this year.
We sure have, yep.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you. That's my only question.
Okay, so Mr. Mason, did you want to respond to some of the comments that were made to the public before we close this public hearing?
Uh, yes, I would. And, uh, let me start by saying I, I totally understand, um, I understand Merle and, and Marie, um, we love them, we know them. Um, you, you know, I would do the same thing if you asked me, do you want a renter next door compared to a homeowner? I would think, oh, no, I would want a homeowner next door. Um, but when you think about it, you, it doesn't really change anything. Anyone who, whose teenage son doesn't take out the garbage or leaves it in the street, anyone who has a birthday party has eight cars come over. Uh, we all do it, even when we lived here the first 20 years without being out of town, without renting. Um, we've had parties. Uh, as to property values, the house next door sold for over a million dollars. It, uh, is not seen, did not seem to have a problem. He's directly next door and he spoke in favor of it. Um, he's met the people. Um, I'll, I'll repeat, not one phone call from anyone asking us to solve something other than the one neighbor. And that's in all of the time that we've done it. Um, everything else is, and now as to this being a super quiet neighborhood and somehow someone coming for a quiet vacation is going to change that. First of all, not that quiet a neighborhood. I wish it were even quieter. I had to call air quality because the sand blasting was so loud and they didn't have their full coverage, uh, that air quality came out from Pinellas County. Duckworth Boat Builders and Florida Dredge and whatever that's called is right behind us. Um, we, we've got a lot of trucks, workers, people, um, uh, Merle's Marina is right behind his house. Uh, there's a lot of activity, there's a lot of tourist boats that go by with their, you know, announcing, now, now here this, everyone have fun, fishing boats, et cetera. Um, but none of our residents are, um, are generally. Now, we do have laws, uh, we're also very strict. We, we tell them they have to be quiet, we, garbage has to go out, only two cars in the driveway is what we ask for, even though we're permitted three. Um, all, all of those things, it's our home. We, we try to take even more diligent, uh, care of it, so, uh, that's just my responses there.
All right, thank you very much. Mayor, at this point, um, we could close the public hearing, uh, portion of the case. It's back to the commission for consideration, discussion, um, and consideration of resolution 2020-55.
Thank you, Mr. Trask. Uh, are there any, uh, additional, uh, commission comments?
Mayor, I, I have a question for Mr. Trask, if I, if I may. It's, it's kind of more of a personal issue. Uh, Mr. Mason mentioned Mr. Seaman owning the Marina. I keep my boat at Mr. Seaman's Marina, is that going to be a problem, a conflict of interest?
No, he's not the applicant. He's just a, he's a participant of the public. It is not a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, that, that was it, my comment. I, I, are you looking for discussion as well, Mayor, or do you want to go around through the commission first or?
Yeah, yes, I would like to go that, rather we're taking, uh, Vice Mayor Carr. Do you have any, uh, comments on that?
Yeah, I just want to ask, um, Ms. Vincent, another question that, Mr. Trask, am I allowed to do that now? Or is it just comments? I can just make statements?
This is ours, of course you can.
So the answer is yes, you're the commission and you're the vice mayor and so if the mayor allows it, absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, Ms. Vincent, so the, you mentioned the planning and zoning board approved this application, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and there's one member that voted no against it?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, was there a reason behind that or?
Uh, just compatibility, I, you know, I, I would have to go back and review the tape to, you know, to give you the exact, I, I don't, I don't recall their reason on the record as to why they voted in opposition.
No worries. Um, and then with the, was the discussion of a minimum night stay, um, discussed as a condition at all with any applicants? Like, do you need to have at least a four-night stay minimum, um, or something along those lines?
No.
Okay. Um, so I don't have any other questions for you, Ms. Vincent. Um, I did ask the police chief for, um, some information for the neighborhood, uh, and there's been no police calls over the past year for this applicant, um, as well. I know there's been some emails that have been received by, um, some of the neighbors. Um, so I, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear because I wanted to check on that to make sure if there is a nuisance issue that we need to be aware of, um, that it's addressed. Um, but overall, um, uh, okay, being quasi judicial, if I remember correctly, Attorney Trask, I'm not supposed to say which, which way I'm leaning, right?
No, this is discussion now. The, the public portion of the hearing is closed. You can discuss it amongst yourselves. And, um, so if you want to discuss the, your position, the way you want to vote, absolutely, now's the time to do that.
Okay, so the zoning district does allow this, um, through a conditioned use. Um, and the zoning district hasn't changed since the inception of the building of the neighborhood. Uh, and I do think it's the right of the owners to apply for this from a conditional use standpoint. Uh, with the planning and zoning board also approving the application and also fits the land use for the city, um, I really don't see any reason that the city or the commission has the right to say no. Uh, in this situation, I think they've proved that they, um, fit all the criteria and, uh, I'm happy to support this with the conditions that Ms. Vincent had put forward. Um, the only thing I would maybe recommend is looking at a minimum night stay as an additional condition, uh, maybe to, to appease, um, some of the concerns by the neighbors. Um, but, uh, um, I feel comfortable with the comments I heard tonight from the applicants as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Carr. Uh, Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I just want to thank the applicant. I think everything was handled really professionally, um, and I absolutely wish them all the best. Um, uh, respectfully, I, I just, I can't get over the standards for review number five on this one. I just do believe that it's going to adversely affect property values and that's kind of the tough part about these quasi judicial hearings is that, you know, it takes some of the, you know, the personal opinion out of it. Um, but I'm, I'm going to vote no on this, um, due to the affecting property values.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Mayor, um, like I said, I, I know people on both sides of this issue and I also know the neighborhood very, very well, obviously manager when we developed it. Um, we've got neighborhoods to the north, we've got the two individual estates and I know the sand blasting very well, as far as the dust goes, the diamond grit and things that, you have to constantly, uh, um, clean. Um, I, I'm just very fearful that, uh, and, and I also ask that we, if there was another conditional use that has ever been applied for this neighborhood and it hasn't and it's been, um, 25 years in existence and things and, and I'm just very fearful of these anomalies with regard to the zoning, kind of driving something like this and, and providing that. Um, I don't know that, that these sort of, uh, for example, the, um, uh, the, the Ryland Home subdivision to the north, I'm not sure what that would, whether that would allow a tourist home or not. I, maybe Ms. Vincent, if you're available, do you know offhand that that would be the case?
I do not believe the zoning will allow a tourist home there. The underlying land use does have a commercial recreation overlay on it, which would support it, but the zoning does not, to my knowledge.
Okay, and, and that's what I'm getting at. I think that particular area is, is kind of developed and then we've got the other neighborhood even further to the north of that, that's on the, actually it's under construction right now that I don't believe will allow tourist homes either. So I, I just think that, I, I, I very respectfully disagree with Ms. Vincent's observation that this is a, a tourist oriented area. I, I think it's really a residential, uh, oriented area and, um, and I think it's an anomaly that's a WD-1. And I'll be honest, I don't remember why it's a WD-1. I just know it had a lot to do with the Marina and allowing the development to take place there. Um, I also very remember your neighborhood very distinctly before it was even anything. It was just basically spoil material from the previous dredgings of the river and, um, and I, I know how that was created too. As a matter of fact, part of your neighborhood was a beach, a local beach there for a while because the, the sand was so nice. So, uh, I'm not going to be able to support this because of that. I don't want to be the one that starts setting a precedence for allowing, uh, tourist homes into what I believe have been historic, um, residential neighborhoods. I think part of Tarpon Springs, uh, really deserves, um, tourist homes, vacation homes. I don't think this is one of them. I think if it was down in the Sponge stocks area, the special area district, things like that, which is very clear, um, I would consider that. I do understand this is a WD-1, but I simply believe it's incompatible with the, uh, the neighborhood. Um, thank you, Mr. Trask.
Thank you. Uh, I know the area very well and, uh, and I know this is a, a residential area. Um, it's actually an island, it's one way in and not one way out. Uh, it's always been a single-family homes there and, um, uh, I really don't see that it's a compatible to the neighborhood, you have rental homes there, so I cannot support that. Um, I will entertain a motion.
Question approved with the conditions of staff.
I'll second it for the purpose of a vote.
And roll call.
Vaticiotes?
No.
Commissioner Donovan?
No.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
No. Thank you. We are now go to, uh, the next item. Tell you, before we go to the next item, let's take a five minutes break, we'll be back soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we now reconvene the UBOC meeting at 9:13 PM. The next item on the agenda is item number 22. The, uh, resolution 2020-57, the application 2092, conditional use for tourist home in WD-1 1110 Marina Drive, underwater, quasi-traditional. City Attorney, if you please, read the resolution.
Mayor, this is resolution 2020-57, the resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number 20-92, requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a tourist home at 1110 Marina Drive, located on the north side of Marina Drive in the WD-1 Waterfront Development District, zoning district, providing for findings, providing for conditions and providing for an effective date. There was a reading of resolution 2020-57, read the quasi judicial procedures. This is a quasi, quasi judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. And a quasi judicial hearing is not the Board's function to make law, but rather apply law that's already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law. then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. Ms. Vincent, you've already been sworn under oath. You can go ahead and proceed with the presentation of the application.
Thank you. This is application 20-92 from Scott Underwood for property at 1110 Marina Drive. Again, this application is virtually identical to the previous application. They are requesting conditional use for a tourist home. The property is owned WD-1 and has a land use designation of commercial recreation. As conditioned, staff does find that this is compliant with the review criteria, and we do recommend approval. I would enter into the record, the staff report, and everything that's associated in the backup, along with the conditions of approval that were read during the previous application that are on the resolution. Planning and zoning board did review this and recommended approval by a vote with one dissenting vote, and staff recommendation is to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Commissioner have any questions of Ms. Vincent on this application?
I have none.
Okay, I'm seeing everyone shake their head no. Let's go ahead then and bring Mr. Underwood back in. As the applicant, Mr. Underwood, can you unmute yourself, please?
He is apparently also...
Yeah, I think I'm back.
Sorry, we were muted.
Okay, Mr. Underwood, you've already been sworn under oath. So you could go ahead and proceed and make your presentation to the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, we purchased the home. We're part-time residents. We live up north and we are always, we spent five months in Tarpon Springs and the rest up in South Dakota. So I guess we purchased the home with, you know, I guess the problem comes with the zoning and everything. We purchased the home thinking that in order to make our mortgage payment and everything, we may need to have a little more income coming in for the second home. So we have rented the house out, you know, rented the house out a week at a time for probably about as long as Becky and the Masons have. So I guess, you know, it was our understanding, reading the Water Development District guidelines and everything, that, you know, that might be allowed. And so we've basically been using that money to help make a few months of the mortgage payments. We rent about 12 weeks a year, mostly in the wintertime. And we have people...
Summer, in the summer.
In the summer, so we have people in charge that take care of, you know, meet the people, meet the guests and everything, keep the house in order, and that type of thing. And like I said, we do, we don't rent. We do a seven day minimum. We do not rent short term. So I guess, like I said, I guess the problem comes in that I don't know why it was zoned the way it was, but basically, we're being punished for using something that the zoning permitted. And, you know, I realize we need a conditional use permit and that type of thing, which we didn't know, you know, originally. So it, and I can see why possibly, I mean, it, the neighborhood is next to commercial properties. And when they talk about the noise, maybe that comes from some of the rentals, it's nothing like the sand blasting that goes on for hours on end. And, you know, you are on an industrial road. That's an industrial that goes by with up to semi trucks, you know, that travel just a few hundred feet from your development. So, yeah, it is, you know, there are single family houses there. And I, you know, I don't know what to say. We just, we try to be good caretakers and take care of things if things come up. We've had a couple neighbors contact us over the years about things. We try to call right away and, you know, get it squared away. But, yeah, you know, it's the exact opposite of, you know, you buy a house in this neighborhood, you should expect maybe that people might use it for something of that purpose. And we bought it thinking that, you know, that it could be possibly used. And then kind of like changing the rules in midstream for us. So it is a hardship for us. We're still making mortgage payments. We're 68 years old. We would like to get it paid off. But I guess, I guess that's, you know, that's after the last applicant. I guess that's, you know, that's about it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Does any of the Commission have questions of Mr. Underwood on his application?
I do, Mr. Trask.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Underwood, the, how long have you owned the home? You may have said it, but I may have not heard it.
16 years.
16 years.
16 years?
Yes.
Okay, and you've been renting for that long? Not renting, you renting, you own the home, but have you been renting the home out for 16 years?
No. Probably.
Probably six, six or seven years out of the 16, probably.
And may I ask if, how, why is it that you started renting the home for, you know, five or six years ago?
Well, you know, when the, when it became a little bit, when some of the websites came along and it became a little bit, you know, there was more of that renting tourist homes going on. We looked into it. We, you know, not much existed 14 years ago, of that type of thing. So, and we were friends with the Masons too. And so, yep, we started, and we pretty much use the same, VRBO is what we use, you know, most of the time for rentals. We do have some people that we know that rent too, but...
A lot of return people that come back every year.
A lot of people come back again, you know, I guess the issue is, you know, you say we're not in the, you know, we're not in the Sponge Docks area when you can see the Sponge Docks across the water. But, you know, most of the people that say, comment that, well, they love the Sponge Docks. We have people that come back multiple years. And they visit the Spundocks more than once usually. They enjoy the restaurants and they enjoy the atmosphere. So it is, as far as...
We're using it for what it's...
There isn't a lot of motels close, really close to the Sponge Docks in Tarpon Springs. So when you think about it, people are a lot more likely when they're, say, staying at our house to, you know, return multiple visits than if you were 10 or 15 miles down the road, kind of a thing. And a lot of the people are, they're coming back, visiting families in the Tarpon Springs area. You know, parents that are retired and have a house too small for the family, stuff like that. And that's why you get, sometimes you get a group of people there. You get a group of cars, and a lot of times it is, it is family members. You know, why would you come to Florida in the summertime? Mostly to visit families is the way it works out, so.
Mr. Underwood, I think that you've answered the Commissioner's question. You're just adding a little extra narrative. Why don't we see if there are any other Commissioner questions of you?
No, thank you. I had no more questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any other Commissioner comments or questions, rather, of Mr. Underwood? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so...
I've got a quick question.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Does this create a hardship to the, Mr. Underwood? Does this create a hardship for you all as property owners?
Well, yes. I mean, you've got certain plans and we're retired, not working anymore. You know, it does, and I don't think that, you know, maybe the people take a lot of, you know, consideration in that, that you are affecting somebody's life when you change something like this. So it, oh yeah, I mean, we'll survive. We'll make things work, but it's going to be a lot, you know, it's harder. We, like I said, we only rent about, it covers about three months maybe of expenses for us, you know, for the year. And we're, you know, we pay taxes and we actually pay more taxes than our neighbors because we aren't permanent residents. So, you know, we're citizens and we like Tarpon Springs.
And you understood that there was a conditional use available in this zoning district, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is that something that you knew when you purchased the home, or is that just something you discovered?
We discovered along the way when we were thinking about renting it out, and we didn't think that Tarpon Springs allowed it. That's one of the reasons we didn't rent right away. Then we found out, you know, we found out about the, that our waterfront development district. So, you know, it was, we didn't think we'd be able to do it. And then we found out and looked at the, you know, you look at the development district rules and regs, and some of those things are listed. So I guess, you know, you can have the house sit empty and nobody visits the Sponge Docks. You can have a few people coming to visit. I'm guessing the merchants would rather have a few visitors, you know, on the Sponge Docks.
Okay. Have you noticed any of the houses selling in your neighborhood?
Yeah, they're at the highest values they've ever sold for. Yeah, this, that, what was, you know, sand blasting behind me would be more of an issue than moving in next door to myself, you know? And of course, we have the sirens coming by now. And, you know, you got semi trucks that put on their air brakes when they make the 90 degree, you know, there by the entrance. So I can see why it was probably in the first place zoned the way it was. But I don't know if it's anomaly or not, but it's really not our fault. I mean, we weren't around when they, you know, zoned it, so.
Yeah. No, I mean, I think you're doing what's right. You have the opportunity to do this. So, I mean, from your view, it's, there's no detrimental value impact to the properties because you're seeing it sold at highest ever, and you've been running Airbnb or BBRO for the past six or seven years?
Yeah, there's never been a complaint to the city ever from our property.
All right. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Any other Commission questions? Not seeing any. Thank you. So Michelle, were there any emails that came in from the public?
No, emails from the public, other than the ones that were sent directly to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, Mr. Jop, do we have anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this agenda item?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in. We do have raised hands, so I'll allow the first person in.
Thank you. Okay, sir, can you state your name for us again, please? Hello? Alan? Alan, are you there? Yeah, you must be on mute. We can't hear you. So, Mr. Jop, can you call, bring the next person in, please?
Yes, sir.
Marie, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, and you've already been sworn under oath. So you can go ahead and make any comments that you would like at this point.
Okay. Wow, this is, this is really tough for me. Mr. Underwood claims that they have people that take care of everything and everything is wonderful. Well, the people who take care of everything is my husband and I. Because when there is a problem next door, we have had the renters come by and ask for help. We have had their cleaning person come by and ask for help with the pool, with their air conditioning. If she needs somebody to open the house for an exterminator, she calls me. She called me just two weeks ago because they need, they had a leak in their roof and they needed somebody to let the roofers in. And her cleaning lady was available at one time, but the roofing company changed the time. I would have done it, but I could not because my husband and I had doctor's appointments. Basically, this has become a burden on us that we do not want any longer. Also, we have, there were 14 people here this summer, one group. They had two large SUVs, and they pulled a U-Haul with all their luggage. This is not six people, eight people. They have a three-bedroom home, and they have a small loft area that they have put bunk beds in. But it's a three-bedroom home. They had 14 people, and I'm not exaggerating. We also had one group come, and they were playing loud vulgar music. We said nothing. We tried not to complain. We tried to just, just let it go. But the very next day, we were outside, and we heard them come out. We were out there before they were off somewhere. They came by, and they yelled inside, "Oh, they're already out there." So we're being made to feel like we are not allowed in our own backyard. And I have to be honest with you. I really don't want to take this anymore. It's really not fair. And maybe we were dumb, but when we bought our home, we have lived in our home longer than anybody else on the island. We bought our home in June of 96, and we closed on it in July of 96. And we have been very active in the association the entire time we've lived here. And we have tried to be good neighbors. We have really tried to be good neighbors. We've tried to do everything we could, but we're really, we're at, we're retired. This is our home. We don't have another home to go to. And with COVID-19, we have been so, you know, social distancing. We have been isolating because I have autoimmune issues. I have asthma. My husband has had cancer three times. We don't go out without wearing a mask. We don't, all we go is to get medicine, probably doctors, and to go to the store. And to have strangers next door all the time is, it's really, it's a burden on us. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jop, is there anyone else from the public?
If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Mr. Seaman, I see that you're there. Did you raise your hand? I didn't take a look. Did you want to speak on this agenda item? You're on mute.
Yes, my comments would be exactly the same as the last one. So I'll spare you the time and let you go on with the meeting. Nothing is at all different about this application over the last one.
Thank you, sir. So, Mayor, it's back to the Commission for discussion and consideration of the application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trask. We go to Commission comments. I would like to say that I have the same concerns as I had with the last, with the previous application. Both of those houses in the same neighborhood, so I cannot support it. I believe it's not comparable to the neighborhood. Vice Mayor Carr?
I've got no further comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I would just say, you know, again, similar to our last item. I'm not trying to create a burden on anybody. It's not my goal to be unfair here. It just comes down to the standards for review and my belief that it's going to affect adjoining property values.
Commissioner Vaticus?
Thank you, Mayor. My thoughts aren't any different. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Second?
In roll call.
Mr. Vaticus?
No.
Commissioner Donovan?
No.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus?
No. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, under miscellaneous, item number 23, the petition to amend zoning and land use of Anclot Isles subdivision. Staff report, Ms. Vincent?
Thank you. Presented for your consideration is a petition requesting to amend the zoning and land use of Anclot Isles. This is the subdivision that you've been reviewing as it relates to these conditional uses. Generally speaking, staff recommendation is to, you know, we would recommend that the Board, you know, authorize staff to go ahead and initiate this requested rezoning and land use amendment. You have a petition of 15 of 19 of the property owners submitted for your consideration. Only, a petition would normally only require 51% of the property under, so we're well exceeding that. And as part of the discussion this evening, you've obviously heard, you know, historically, this property was WD-1, but in reality, it functions, you know, as a single-family subdivision. So it probably is appropriate to correct this at this point in time. Just, and for the record, in the WD-1 zoning... Um just and for the record in the WD one zoning district, there are a lot of things that are permitted uses by right that um. You really don't want in a single-family residential district like this. So.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. I I support the request, initiate the process to correct the zoning. Would you please explain what's the process of doing that?
If the board authorizes uh tonight, then staff will go ahead and. Uh we will do, we will initiate the map amendments for the for the zoning map and the um and the land use. Um I'll need to evaluate this as to, you know, what the appropriate zoning district would be. Um and uh and what the appropriate land use would be, but if I have direction to go forward, we'll we'll. We'll do that and then we will advertise it and we will basically be the applicant.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Carr?
Yeah, I have no problem correcting an issue that was um with the wrong zoning of the neighborhood, so I'm happy to support that.
Commissioner Donovan?
No questions for me, Mayor. I'm happy to support it.
Commissioner Vatici Kures?
So Ms. Vincent, um we're looking at our one hundred or one one hundred A. Is that about right?
Um. I'm initially gonna say no because the the. The zoning district that the WD one reflects back to for the district setback requirements is actually R sixty. So I'm gonna have to finesse that a little bit and see how we, what's the best way for us to do that because the R sixty obviously allows for. Much less um front side and rear yard setback requirements, but it also allows for duplexes. So. It may even be necessary to maybe just do a plan development on this so we can just call it out specifically.
Now, the reason the reason I'm asking is you you'll find something that's gonna fit. As a residential neighborhood without the uh the the ability to have vacation homes.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Manusas, we'll go to our public comments.
No emails received other than those sent directly to the board.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, do we have anyone that is wishing to speak on this item?
If anyone would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand.
Merle Seaman, I don't know.
We do have Merle and um a phone in.
Do you? You want the phone in first or you want me?
Go ahead, Mr. Seaman. Go ahead.
I'll be quick, really. I I just encourage you to support the item. It's it's just a simple cleanup of. Of things that should have been. Uh this way a long time ago. So I appreciate your consideration. Uh and and thank the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, would you uh connect the next person?
Hello, it's it's Marie Dubuque again. I just wanted to say thank you very, very much for taking up these issues. And we really appreciate you taking up the rezoning for us. And um thank you. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'll allow the next person in. Alan, can you hear us?
Yeah, so um. Thank you for uh. Hearing us and and. Look, I mean, this is a residential area. It's 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 not commercial. So. You know, I'm I'm I'm, you know. Sorry that it wasn't. Done that way like years ago, but. Let's fix it now. Thank you.
Mr. Jump? Anybody else?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Thank you. It's back to the commissioner. If we had any more comments, uh the chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I have a point of order question for Ms. Vincent.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh do we, Ms. Vincent, do we accept the petition and then uh approve to move ahead with residential rezoning? Would that be the proper wording?
That that would be fine. It does say that it has to be um by motion. So yes, I think I'm just. The motion to uh direct staff to re, you know, initiate rezoning and land use amendment to uh a single-family residential district. And that would be sufficient.
Okay, thank you. That's all, thank you. I'll make a motion, I guess we're waiting for me. I'll make a motion to uh direct staff to proceed with a uh. To amend the zoning and land use uh for Ankle Islands subdivision to a residential use.
Second.
In roll call.
Mr. Vatici Kures?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus?
Yes. So Ms. Vincent, we're gonna be waiting for you to bring it back then.
So get on it.
Thank you. The next item and the last item is number twenty-four, appointment to the Public Art Committee. Um. The office has been notified the resignation of Theodore Iwanu. Additionally, the term of Ms. Jennings has expired, will be expired October thirty-first. And she is interested to be reappointed. Or we can move one of the alternates to that position, or we can select a person from the list. Vice Mayor Carr?
So this is just Ms. Jennings' position, right?
Yes.
Um I would move to move Michaela all up. All up, I don't know how to say her last name. Um the alternate number two to the full-time expired term. Of Theodore.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Vice Mayor?
Say that again, please.
So there's two items here. Are we just talking about item number one or?
The number one first, so then we'll come back to the second one. This is the uh. Uh the vacancy created by uh. Uh Joe Jennings, she wants to be reappointed. Or the options that we have.
Okay. No, I I mean.
You have, excuse me, you have to vote on both.
Yes, but we're gonna select it first and then we're gonna make a motion.
Okay.
Um I would I would move to put alternate number two in Ms. Jennings' position.
Okay. Commissioner Donovan?
This might be a question for staff. Um and I know we've talked about this with our last few appointments. Um what's the status of term limits for uh serving on our committees?
Okay, that's gonna be brought back to you um once we get um with the city attorney. Um Irene's gonna be working with him on that, and that's probably not gonna be till the beginning of the new year. I know they these this board, I believe, does not have term limits as it is right now.
Okay, so I guess we'll.
There is a code section. You can't serve more than ten years on a board.
Okay. Um yeah, no, it's it's nothing against any individuals on any of our committees. I really appreciate all their hard work, but. Um I wish we as a board of commissioners had stronger term limits. So that's gonna be something I'm very interested in. In trying to get fresh blood and trying to get new opinions um onto this board. Um as far as the board action tonight, I'm okay to reappoint Ms. Jennings um. As the chairman uh with the knowledge that, you know, we we have an upcoming discussion in terms of uh actual term limits. Um is that all you want from me for now, Mayor, or do you also want my recommendation for number two?
We're just, no, just the one?
Okay, then that's then that's all I have for right now.
Okay. Commissioner Vatici Kures?
Uh Commissioner Donovan, that was to reappoint Ms. Jennings. Is that what you said? Reappoint Ms. Jennings?
Yes.
Okay, I I agree with that. Thank you.
Uh I also agree to reappoint Ms. Jennings. So let's go to the uh other vacancy that we have created by uh Mr. Theodore Iwanu. We need to uh. Either move uh one of the alternates, one or two, or select a person from the list. Vice Mayor Carr?
Um I'm I'm uh David Salo, he's a. I how do I say this politically correct? So we have more of a mature um. Uh aged um public art committee. Um and then we just lost one of our younger um individuals on the board. I think David is a, he's got some experience here in public art, or at least as an artist from schooling. Um and he showed some interest here. Um so I would appoint David Salo. To fill an unexpired term.
Thank you. Uh. Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, I was impressed with his application. I like Mr. Salo as well.
Commissioner Vatici Kures?
Um. Ms. Manusas, how long do we have until that uh unexpired term ends?
This this term for this appointment right here expires twenty twenty-three.
Oh, so it's it's um, okay, so Theodore expired uh retired or resigned towards the end of his term. Is that correct?
Yes, he his term would have ended October thirty-first of this year.
Okay, thank you. Um. My, I would like to move up, I I would like to move one of the alternates up to full-time position. I I. I don't know that historically that's been the case, but that's been my experience and and uh. I'd like to uh move Mr. Stackhouse up to the uh permanent position and uh move someone new into the alternate position.
Thank you. Well, now we can act, uh I will request to have uh entertain a motion.
Um. I'll make a motion to. Reappoint Joan Jennings uh to another three-year term that will expire October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and appoint David Salo to fill unexpired term. Um of Theodore. Uh. This term will expire on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three as well.
Second.
Point of order, do we vote on both of them at the same time?
Just one, yeah.
Just one motion for both positions?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, roll call.
Commissioner Vatici Kures?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus?
Yes. Thank you. Well, that concludes the regular session agenda. And we're gonna go to staff comments. Um. Police chief, oh, here you are. Police chief, any comments?
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trask?
No comments, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Licors?
You're on mute, Mark.
No comments.
Thank you. Ms. Manusas?
No comment.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Uh back-to-back meetings have been really exciting. Um Mark, thank you for the opportunity. Uh I I think we all did well uh last night with the police board, um with the union board and also with the staff. So I I'm proud again to say that um. The commission has stand and will stand behind the Tarpon Springs Tarpon Springs Police Department. Um in any way we can support them. Uh I'm proud that we have our own uh police force here within the city as well. Um I I think the police has done a great job. I did notice that um. A police person on bike patrol today. Uh I thought that was great to see as well. I just wanna say great job on that. Um I I think it's it's a much different approach, um and it's refreshing to see that. Um so I also um. I'm gonna be on vacation the next week and a half or so, um and I'm gonna be traveling back uh in town. The day of our next meeting. Uh I don't know if I'm gonna make it in time or not based on how far I'm traveling, so with that, I wanna go ahead and ask. Um for an excused absence for the next commission meeting on the twenty-seventh.
I will ask for motion for that.
Motion.
In roll call.
Who's second that?
Second.
Between Commissioner Donovan and myself, Ms. Manusas, so choose. Actually, probably unanimous for uh Vice Mayor Carr, so.
Commissioner Vatici Kures?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus?
Yes.
Thank you. No further comments.
Donovan, do you have any comments?
No, I just wanna thank the board for an efficient meeting tonight. I uh I don't know what I'm gonna do till midnight, we're usually here till then, so. Probably just stare at my screen, but uh no, I I appreciate everybody's comments tonight and uh. Thanks staff for uh putting together a good agenda.
Commissioner Vatici Kures?
Thank you, Mayor. I I'll be honest with you, I'm I'll be happy if it ever gets behind us, this COVID thing. It just drives me nuts and and we. We just kinda get caught up in it and everything. So I'll I'll be happy when. Uh hopefully this will end at some point. Um I do have a question, though. Um. I sent uh Attorney Trask a question. Actually, I I don't know whether, there's certainly more than one concerning the uh. Uh concerns with the uh firefighter reunion negotiations and. Um and and I wanna ask uh city uh city manager, uh Licorice, do you? I is it, I guess it's called a shade meeting or something like that, for what I read. Do would you need something like that for finishing up with the firefighters? Or I don't know where we are right now.
Um we're coming back with a meeting within the next week and I'll know then if I need one or not. Um I'll 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 know after that meeting.
Okay, uh that would be before best and final, I guess, is is what I'm getting at or whatever you call it.
Ab- absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh I just would like to I to to thank the staff for doing an excellent job and preparing all those meetings. Um back-to-back. Also, uh our board, Board of Commissioners, I think, were. We're doing a very good job and being very professional. With that, I wanna thank you all. And that concludes the regular session meeting and it's adjourned at nine fifty-two P M.
Nice, thank you.